Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 19, 2021 City Council meeting. It is 7:01 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we remember this evening the words of King Solomon of old, "Unless the Lord builds a house, they labor in vain to build it." And we remember the words of our founding father, one of our founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin, who said, "It is God that governs in the affairs of men." Father, govern our affairs, guide us and lead us, and give us wisdom this evening as we go over the affairs of our city. Grant wisdom to our mayor and all the city council. Heavenly Father, protect all our neighborhoods, keep our schools safe havens, protect our first responders and our all police officers, Father. And Father, we speak your prosperity and your blessing upon the businesses. May they continue to prosper in Jesus' name. And now, Father, I speak the blessing of all, the Jewish blessing over our city. The Lord bless you and keep you, West Covina. The Lord make his face shine upon you, lift up its countenance upon you, and grant you his shalom, peace. Peace be within the walls and the borders of our city and upon all its residents, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Tepat Tzuyi.
Present.
Councilman Wu.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Protim Castellanos.
Here.
Mayor Lopez Viado.
Present. City attorneys, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, on to presentations. Before we begin presentations, I would like to note that the unit citation award that was scheduled for tonight was conducted during the state of the city. Therefore, the unit citation award will not take place during tonight's meeting, as well as the presentation by the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District that has been moved to the November 2 City Council meeting and will not be given this evening. We'll go ahead and start the other presentations. So this is for the certificate of recognition of the Overseas Lions Club for the donation of the West Covina Senior Center. May I have Vivian Sun, Michelle Hong Lee, and Howard Wong please come up to the front? So we just would like to thank the Overseas Lions Club for their donations of 500 bottles of hand sanitizer to the West Covina Senior Center. We greatly appreciate the donation. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes, dear Mayor, council members, and the city of West Covina, we thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to serve from Los Angeles Overseas Lions Club. And as Councilman Tony Wu focuses on the senior centers, and we donated to the senior centers, and then hopefully we can participate more with your city to gather more donations. As our founder, Sharon Chen, would like to help out the community some more. And thank you so much for the opportunity, and God bless you.
Thank you. And we'd like to let everyone know that those hand sanitizers will be delivered to the seniors' homes along with their meals, so we wanted to say thank you again. And with that, we'd like to present a certificate. So Vivian Sun. Michelle Hong Lee. Howard Wong. Suzanne is not here today, and of course, the Overseas Lions Club. So would you give everyone, everyone can give him a round of applause? Thank you. Thank you for your donation. And this is from the State Assembly. Next up, we have the Fire Prevention Week poster contest winners. To announce the Fire Prevention Week contest winner, can I please call forward Fire Chief Vincent Capelli?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, community. The Fire Department has Fire Prevention Week every year. The Nation has it, and the West Covina Fire Department has a poster contest. I would like to ask our poster contest winner, Jaylin Fletas, hope I said it correctly. And I also would like to have the principal of Vine Elementary, Glenda Levesque. So every year, hear me, hello? So every year, in the Nation, we have Fire Prevention Week in October, and we have open house. And every year, there's a theme for Fire Prevention Week. This year's theme was Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. About three years back, four years back, the West Covina Fire Department decided to partner with our local schools and have what's called a poster contest. We give the schools what the theme is, and we ask them, have your students do a poster, and then they'll submit them. Then we vet them all, and then we pick a bunch to take to our open house, which is the week before Fire Prevention Week, and we present them there for voting, for voting, so the citizens can and the community can vote on the best poster. And this year, here's our poster winner right here.
So she has two ways out, beep beep, smoke alarm saves lives, listen for the beep, meeting place, and thank you to the firefighters. Is there anything you'd like to say, Jaylin?
Anything about your drawing? Or what made you come up with it? I came up with it to show that, to show two ways out of the house, just in case one way's blocked and the other way will be able to have you come out, and there's a meeting place outside the house.
Thank you.
So, so, look, so there's a couple, there's a couple of things that we teach to kids and even adults when we talk about fire prevention is having exit drills in the house, Edith, which she covered in those, and a meeting location. Your family should know where to meet you in case of emergency. So that was great. We do have a plaque that goes to the school, oh, right here. So we developed this plaque. Fire prevention inspector Greg Layton helped develop that. And each year, it goes to the school and it stays there for the whole year, and the principals get to show it off to the other principals at their meeting to say, we won the poster contest. And as you can see, Roland won twice, eventually 2020 just gets a sad face, and then Vine Elementary. And tomorrow, we'll be going to Vine Elementary, and we will be presenting it to the school as a school event. We have a nice basket for our winner. It's all hers, she doesn't have to share. There's also a coupon for her to have a dinner and her family at the fire station. And then we also have a gift to the principal, thanking her for it.
Is there anything the principal would like to say?
We just want to thank the West Covina Fire Department for just a great opportunity. What a great way to kick off the school year, engage our students, and just feel like part of the community. We're super excited to have you guys visit our site tomorrow again and to be able to recognize Jaylin with our entire school. So thank you again, and congratulations.
One last thing I didn't mention is we actually make the poster, we copy it, we put it on magnets, and it'll actually stay on one of our fire engines for a couple of months as they ride around the city.
So next, we have the Life Saving Award. I'd like to invite Chief Richard Bell down to join me for a special presentation. So last Thursday night, the city hosted a state of the city address and employee awards ceremony honoring employees for their outstanding achievements. To keep the focus on the night of the employees, Chief Bell elected to keep his presentation from the list of awards given to police department personnel. So tonight, we wanted to focus the spotlight on our police chief, and it is my honor and privilege to present Chief Richard Bell with the West Covina Police Department's Life Saving Award, which is awarded to recognize the actions of department personnel that results in the saving or preservation of human life which otherwise would have been lost without the employees' direct involvement. The award consists of metal, ribbon, and citation. So at this time, I would like to call Adam and Jennifer Capitano down to join us. They're here, surprise! So let me tell you the story this. On June 19, 2021, while attending a service at the South Hills Country Club, Chief Richard Bell was seated at the table with his wife, Avis, and Assistant Fire Chief Mike Brown. As those in attendance began to eat, Chief Bell saw that at a table across from him, a female, Jennifer Capitano, appeared to be in distress, focusing her attention on the male, husband Adam Capitano, who was seated next to her. Chief Bell realized that Mr. Capitano was having difficulty breathing and exhibiting signs of being in respiratory distress. To the surprise of those at his table, who were not aware of what was happening, Chief Bell quickly jumped from his seat and ran to the aid of Mr. Capitano. As he arrived at the table where Capitanos were seated, Chief Bell was able to determine that Mr. Capitano was choking on some food he had ingested and was unable to breathe. Chief Bell immediately reverted to his training and experience and began to perform abdominal thrusts, formerly known as a Heimlich maneuver, on Mr. Capitano, which successfully dislodged the food that was blocking his airway, allowing Mr. Capitano to breathe once again. Chief Bell's awareness and ability to recognize the emergency in a crowded room when most others around him had not is a testament to his dedication to public safety and vigilance for the welfare of those he has been entrusted to serve. If it wasn't for the swift and courageous actions by Chief Bell to render aid, the outcome of the Capitano family could have been dramatically different. So please join me in congratulating Chief Bell in his award with the West Covina Police Department's Life Saving, and we have this. He saved a life. Thank you. Chief Bell, is there a few words you'd like to say first?
First of all. First of all, I'd like to say thank you. I'm actually surprised that you would be here. I got kind of emotional just there because, you know, I interview a lot of young men and women for hiring purposes, and the common theme amongst all of them is they want to save life, that that's the reason they get into this profession. And you can work an entire profession and not have something like that happen. As a testament to me, I've been in law enforcement for almost 26 years now, and a situation never arises like that. And as I promoted through the ranks, I kept thinking, you know what, the higher I go, the less chance I'll have of something like that happen. But I can just tell you that on that night, in that moment, when I, when I saw your face, it was obvious, and, and there's just something inside of you that, that you just have to react. No one needs to prompt you, no one needs to tell you, and so that's what happened. But I'm, I'm happy, probably one of the, after actually making sure you were okay. But their 14-year-old son, if you forgive me, I don't remember his name, Jackson, came up to me afterwards, after it had all settled down, and he said, "Thank you for helping my dad." And I'm telling you, it touched my heart. So what I want to say is, on that night, everybody went home. So, there we go.
Mr. Capitano? Would you like something to say?
I would just like to say, that was one of the scariest times in my entire life, and you know, I thank God that Chief Bell was there. If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be here today. So I would like to say, oh, and for the record, Chief Bell was sitting at the table with the Fire Department, and he got there first, so.
Oh, police!
Noted. Just wanted to make sure everyone got that. But Chief Bell, thank you. You saved my life, and I'm forever grateful.
Let's take one photo. Beautiful medal. Do you want me to?
Sure.
Chief Bell family's home. So proud of Chief Bell.
This is my wife, Avis, my mother-in-law, Glenda, and these are all my kids here.
Senator Susan Rubio and Assembly Philip Chen would also like to give you the certificates as well. Thank you. Thank you so much. Great news. All right. So we now would like to move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the deputy city clerk. Any emails received by 5:00 PM will have been posted to the city's website. All emails are part of the public record. For those who wish to speak on tonight's public hearing agenda, those will be saved for later on this evening. Other than that, I know we have a long agenda with lots of speakers tonight that, so we are limiting it to three minutes. Deputy City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight for this generic public comment?
Madam Mayor, for the consent calendar, we have six commenters.
Six, okay.
Our first public speaker is Ryan Serrano, followed by Frederick Sykes, followed by John Schumaker.
This one's actually a presentation, correct? Oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address the community of West Covina. My name is Ryan Serrano, and I am a field deputy with the Office of Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors Chair, First District Supervisor Hilda Elsalise. I want to provide a brief update on vaccination rates in the city, and I know we just finished the ceremonial presentations, but if you will allow it, Mayor, I would like to provide the city a certificate for Filipino-American History Month. Los Angeles County remains committed to providing critical resources for our residents and small businesses as we emerge from this pandemic. Currently, vaccination rates in the city of West Covina are looking good for our 65-plus cohort at 94.5% and 72.9% for our 12-17 cohort, for an overall vaccination rate of 81.8% in the city. Great job, but there is still room to improve. If you are a small business owner or a community-based organization, Supervisor Salise's office can partner with you to offer mobile vaccine clinics in the community. We have appreciated the vaccination efforts here in the city of West Covina and would love to continue to ensure the community's well-being. I am also happy to share Supervisor Salise's South Almani office is currently open to the public by appointment only. If you have any questions, you can contact us at 909-593-3661. And then I'll go ahead and present this. In recognition of the dedicated service to the affairs of the community and the civic pride demonstrated by the numerous contributions for the benefit of all residents of Los Angeles County, congratulations. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Sykes, followed by John Schumaker, followed by William Elliott.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, members of the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, 43-year resident, retired deputy sheriff, and former mayor of this city. I am here asking you again about two matters concerning our health. First, the matter of improving how we can protect our health from smoking, especially when it involves the health and well-being of our children. I hope that you will please allow the West Covina Alliance to give a presentation on smoking and multi-unit housing. And as a public servant all of my adult life, I have always put protecting children in the highest priority. So when I was on the City Council, and it was very important for me to protect the children of our community in every way imaginable. And when the subject of smoking in our parks was raised, it was automatic that the children came to mind and how they should be protected. And I ask you to please consider the multi-housing unit no-smoking law. This would help protect the children where they sleep. When they go to school, they're in a no-smoking zone. We should do the same for where they live. Now, the second matter that I am concerned about, of course, is establishing a West Covina Health Department. I ask you please to reconsider. We can't afford it. And it's evident by what happened in July 2020. We borrowed $204 million to pay bills, and that came with bonding our streets. So for 25 years, we're leasing our streets back. Additionally, Big League Dreams, $57 million is what that costs, and we're still trying to pay that debt. Only until about 2034, unless we make some arrangements, that's how long it's going to take to pay off that debt. So please reconsider. We need police. We only have 90, when we should have 140. Our streets are deplorable. We have other basic city services that are going without being addressed. So please, folks, reconsider, let's focus on public safety. Public safety should be first. We don't need this redundancy of a health department. We have LA County, and we've already paid, and they're not giving us the money back. Thank you.
Our next spoke speaker is John Schumaker, followed by William Elliott, followed by Elsa Grenau.
I'm very perplexed about the city council. We have people who are very well-educated, very successful in their personal and business lives, said they're going to do certain things, and then, for some reason, when they got elected, became incapable of doing anything that they said they were going to do. It's almost like they, you know, it's almost like somebody came up with a needle and poked it in their head and said, "The smart, the smart part that relates to governing, we're going to take out." You know, I ask questions, you know, about who gets hired in the city, how you go about doing things, and when it comes to this, I'm leaving you and her out because you're not, you're too new. At least you're giving it a shot. You know, the other one lied to the public about who she was and what she did and what she believed in, you know, to get votes. But I'm just astounded, just astounded, that, you know, my boss, when I'd tell him some of the things that were going on, and he'd read them in the paper, goes, "Is there something in the water in West Covina? Please don't drink it, because I don't want you to turn into that." And I said, "No, I'm pretty sure it isn't, unless it's in the bottled water that they take and drink that's behind them at, you know, behind the tables." But, you know, one of the things I asked one time, and this was many years ago, said, "Is there anybody on the city council that if you owned a company that had a $100 million budget, that had 300 employees or more, and had 100,000 customers, would you hire that person, any of them, to run your company?" And I was astounded at how many said no. And I said, "You know what? That's what you did when you voted people in." And I see, you know, one of the first things that I see that you do is, "Would you really hire this guy to run your company?" You know? And the way you're laughing, the answer is, "No, you wouldn't." But you hired him to run the city. That kind of explains right there what's wrong, you know? It's, it's just unbelievable. So take back, you know, what makes you successful in your personal life and your professional life, and apply it to the city, and you'll be surprised at how much things turn around and actually go in the right direction. Thank you.
Our next spoke speaker is William Elliott, followed by Elsa Grenau, followed by Sakoro Chacon.
Good evening, City Council, William Elliott. David Carney is the best city manager we had in four city managers, okay? We paid Posmont $400,000 a year. That's back when West Covina had $80 million in the bank, and the city council was spending money like drunken sailors, except that would be disparaging to drunken sailors, because when they run out of money, they stop drinking and go back to the ship. You know, everybody's a critic. Everybody's a critic, some more than others. And if the truth was told, this city council has done a lot to bring forward the city from where we were. We're on the rebound, even financially. We're not making huge strides, but we're doing better. The city is healthier than it was. So, you know, people get up here and, you know, you know, I've criticized people too. It's your right as an American, that's why we're up here, you know, speaking our minds for three minutes. But I just want to say about Amazon, you know...
Amazon is for the next...
Oh, I can't speak on Amazon? Okay, I'll fill out another card.
Yeah.
And what was the other thing? The Health Department, can I talk about that?
You can talk about it, anything you want.
So the Health Department, I keep hearing the major complaint from the opposition of creating a West Covina Health Department, which would be great for the people of West Covina, but nobody wants to listen about the good, the good things. What they want to say is, "God, we, we just can't afford it. We can't afford it. The city's broke, it's common sense, we can't afford it." How many times has it been said over and over and proven? The Health Department for West Covina will be self-funded, meaning we're going to get the same money that the city of Los Angeles, excuse me, the county of Los Angeles got. And no, they're not going to give us anything back, but we can stop that money train and no representation. Hilda Salise's representative wants to get up here and give somebody an award? I bet he's already gone. Well, you need to tell, tell the county supervisor that we want representation of West Covina, take our money that we send for the Health Department through our taxes, and it gets redistributed, sir, to underserved communities. And that money, if it came to West Covina, we would control that in West Covina. And it's going to be a great thing that silly little signature gathering effort is going to go down in flames like a Steve Bennett candidacy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elsa Grenau, followed by Sakoro Chacon, followed by Aubrey Ochoa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Elsa Grenau, and I represent the West Covina Community Alliance Network, part of the Tobacco-Free Partnership. It was a group formed in 2019... It was a group formed in twenty nineteen, and I've had the honor and privilege of working in your community for about three years. These residents are concerned about protecting the health and the welfare of the community from the harmful effects of secondhand smoke. And the West Covina Community Alliance Network has helped shape the conversation about tobacco-related policies in the city. We want West Covina to be a city where people can live, work, and play and breathe healthy air. Who doesn't want that, right? We applaud that in twenty-ten, the city of West Covina adopted the Tobacco Retail License Ordinance, and it helps reduce sales of tobacco products to minors. When I go to the local retail centers, I see the stickers. I know the West Covina Police do enforce that, that rule, so the minors are not being sold tobacco products. And we applaud that in twenty-seventeen, the city adopted the Smoke-Free Parks Ordinance. Unfortunately, even with these two policies in place, the city still has an overall grade of D, according to the American Lung Association, for tobacco-related policies. And one way to raise the grade is to consider other policy solutions that protect the community. As our coalition member said, "We protect the kids in their schools and the public spaces, but not in the place where they spend the majority of their time." Imagine being exposed to secondhand smoke for eight to ten to twelve hours when you're living at home. And now with marijuana recreational use legalized, people are being exposed to these other vapors. So we don't want that for our kids in the community. There's more housing being built in the community, and so as these new places are being brought up, they should be protecting people from the addictive, toxic chemicals in secondhand smoke. So imagine the obstacles of the renters and condo owners who cannot speak up for their rights to breathe smoke-free air, because they're afraid of retaliation, they're afraid of eviction, they're afraid of the confrontation of, of a neighbor who's, who's a smoker and says, "F you, I don't want to do that." No one has a right to regularly expose their neighbors to poisonous air, yet this is what is happening when secondhand smoke drifts. So I want to offer my resources. I have a booklet, if I may leave this with the city clerk. It has a presentation, and we are here to educate and inform city decision-makers if you should consider establishing stronger tobacco policies. The Tobacco-Free Partnership is here at your service. Thank you.
Thank you. You can give it to your...
Our next speaker is Socorro Chacon, followed by Albert Ochoa, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents of West Covina. My name is Socorro Chacon, and I'm a community engagement coordinator with the Tobacco-Free Partnership. I'm also a member of the Community Alliance Coalition. And tonight, I have the pleasure of meeting some of you and, or introduce to some of you, but tonight, I would like to use this opportunity to speak on behalf of all the coalition members that were not able to attend because of the time, helping the kids with the homework, dinner, and, and they were not allowed to be here. I have been participating with the Coalition for not a long time, for the last six months, but while doing outreach, attending events, or meetings in different locations that I made them, I understand why they are complaining about the secondhand smoke, because I have been exposed to them while visiting or, or doing outreach. So I'm not going to take all the time to read the, the personal anecdotes that we have been, and we will continue to collect, but I will, I will go about maybe two or three. This is from Rosa Escalante, zip code nine-one-seven-nine-zero, and they said, "I have experienced some secondhand smoke indoors, coming through walls, windows, or, or from common areas, and, and this affect my nine-years-old son. We live on an apartment complex, and even that this is a free residence, still smoke, and nobody enforce it." We have Esther Bryan, also the zip code nine-one-seven-nine-one. "Secondhand smoke makes me cough, irritates my nose, and it may cause lung cancer. My father died from lung cancer. Smoking is horrible." And Vanessa Chavez, also zip code nine-one-seven-nine-zero, he said, "The, this, the secondhand smoke affects my breathing, and my son get nauseous when the smell." I have a copies that I can handle it and for you to read it later, and like, like, I want to assure you, council members and the mayor, that the residents of West Covina are not only in support of smoke-free multi-unit housing, but they also want to declare the secondhand smoke a nuisance. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Albert Ochoa, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Steve Bennett.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, staff. My name is Albert Ochoa. I want to address a safety vehicle issue at my intersection address, where I have been living there for twenty-three years. We have cars speeding, violating the intersection, stop sign, just a matter of time when we have another accident. At night, they wake us up, skidding, hitting the curbs, then we look out the window, they take off, so there's no police report to make out. On March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, was the last accident we had. It was at night, twenty-five P.M. approximately, a car was speeding, lost control, drove onto my neighbor's front lawn, totaled the vehicle. Lucky, no neighbors were out on the lawn, could have been a fatality. I want to be proactive. I have ideas, and would like to meet with you to go over them. Halloween's around the corner. I know the kids are probably going to be out this year, because it looks like things are getting better, and the weather's changing. I know just a little bit of drizzle, a little bit of rain. It's a sharp ninety-degree corner turn by my intersection where I live at. So, yeah, I feel, I fear for the concern for my family, my kids, my grandkids, the neighbors. So it's something that we need to address, and I need some guidance. I've called the law enforcement, they came out in the past, but they've been shorthanded, so I know that's not the way it should be, or when they do enforce, things change, things improve, but it hasn't been like that for a while. So I need some help.
Which streets again?
I'm sorry?
Which streets?
It's South Cherrywood Street and James Avenue.
Okay, can you make sure to leave your name and information to the city manager, and then we will make sure...
It's on my card.
Okay. Make sure to, to address that, please.
Hey, if you need anything else, my number's on there. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is R. Robinson, followed by Steve Bennett.
Bill Robinson, resident. General Colin Powell, a great American, died yesterday, totally vaccinated. He died of COVID complications, totally vaccinated, but dead. The world is being set up for famine next year. Transhumanism, human beings two-point-oh are, are losing today's spiritual battle. The media, the mainstream media monopolies that we rely on for information, totally worthless, worthless. Vaccine doesn't work. The vaccine cult is hacking into your DNA, corrupting the software of life. Vax hurts your DNA, destroys your, your natural immunity. Your natural, God-given immunity is compromised, unbalanced. You become vulnerable to dozens of different medium and long-term consequences. We don't even know yet. We're lab rats. Natural immunity is broad, durable, and long-lasting. Booster shots are hardly necessary, but it appears some will line up to be reprogrammed every six months for the rest of their natural lives. I hope to God that the seventy-two percent figure for West Covina is exaggerated. The PCR test for COVID doesn't mean anything. PCR testing is a scam, but a very profitable scam. The vaccine cult is a Trojan horse. People need to wake up. Children especially need to be protected from the vax. They have, they have no risk, no reason to vaccinate children. The state of, you don't believe me? The state of Israel is the most vaccinated people in the world. They're in bad shape. Australia now is a medical tyranny, and the, the good, the good story is Sweden and the Amish community are in very good shape now, because they opted out. I'm in the middle of reading a great book just published, COVID-nineteen and the Global Predators: We Are the Prey. Dr. Peter Bregan, M.D., a, a great book. Instead of relying on the media, you need to do your own research. This book has just been published. If you, if you go to the Bregan website, you can get it for twenty bucks and six dollars delivery charges.
Thank you.
So, read the book. If, if you listen to Channel Four, they may tell you that the earth is flat.
Our last speaker is...
Well, the earth is not flat.
We're going to have Steve Bennett.
And if the, if the mainstream media says so, just don't believe them.
Come on down, Steve. Thank you.
I feel like I always follow Bill Robinson.
I know.
I feel like I'm always waiting, too. Good evening, Council. I'm going to speak tonight, so before the city attorney interrupts you, I know I'm not going to speak later on the public hearing, I'm going to speak now, so we'll clear that up. So tonight on the agenda, you have the Amazon facility, and I'm actually neutral to it. The, the thing that I would like you guys to do is, is make the best business decision for the city.
Sorry, one moment.
Steve? You're going to speak at the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm not going to speak during the public hearing, I'm going to leave, so I'm going to say my comments under oral communications.
No.
You can usually do that, we've done that for years.
You can maybe submit them in writing if you're not going to be here.
Say that again?
You can submit them in writing if you're not going to be here.
So usually, you can't speak twice on a subject, and normally, over the last years, I've spoken on many public hearings during oral communication, so I'm trying to understand what's changed.
If you're going to speak on Amazon, you speak during the public hearing.
So I can't sit up here and tell you that I think it's, should be a residential development rather than Amazon? You're going to tell me I can't talk about that?
City Attorney, go ahead.
I mean, it's not a special meeting where you can only talk about the one topic, right, Mr. City Attorney? Madam Mayor? Because we've talked about public hearings many a times up here in oral communication.
City Attorney has rules. City Attorney. It's a public...
So I can sit here for a minute and a half and waste your time if you want?
You're more than welcome to.
Or you can hear me talk. Either way, it doesn't matter to me, because honestly, we make more money on property taxes, so I'm just kind of curious if we do residential.
You have a minute and twenty-two.
Yeah, minute and twenty seconds. So I was just thinking, you know, why are we doing it to Amazon for only four million dollars? We can get a lot more out of it. Residential has a higher property tax, more turnover, we don't have the one percent that we get with a regular development that's going to be there for ten years. You're not going to make much money on eighty thousand at one percent increase, but on residential, they sell their property now, and then it's reassessed. So the long-term benefit to the city is residential on that property. That's how the best use of that property is. With twenty-one acres or whatever it is, we can do three times what we did at Pioneer, which was a hundred and sixty units, right? So I'm trying to understand the logic. Let's get the most money for the city, or at least make Amazon pony up a lot more millions than what it is, so we can do, so we can do streets.
Two seconds.
I, I see the time, I'm watching. But we can do streets that way, because they're not going to do enough money to us in a public benefit to repair the streets for the hundreds of vans that are coming out daily, that we only did one day at the church. They're going to do it seven days a week. That's the honest truth. The right financial decision is not to do the Amazon or make them pay more money. Do you want me to count it down, or how do you want me to do this?
You can do whatever, you have three seconds.
So I appreciate it.
Uh, order, order!
So, so I appreciate the time.
Time's up, thank you.
I thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate the time, I hope you guys do the right business decision for the city.
Time's up, Steve, thank you.
Yeah, no, if I didn't waste so much with the city attorney, I'd have had more time.
Steve Bennett, next.
I, I understand, but I'm just pointing out the fact of what we need to do.
Can I have order, please?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
So it's been a pleasure.
We're going to continue on to the next...
Please go to the ten million dollars at least.
I've already warned you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. City Manager, may you please respond to public comments concerns?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. I'm going to briefly respond to some of the comments that were made, that I can. In the interest of time, I plan to be short as well with my city manager's report, because I know most of our people are here tonight on the Amazon hearing, and I want us to get to that. A couple of our speakers, three tonight, address the Tobacco-Free Partnership and the deleterious effects of smoking. I'd be happy to meet with Elta and Fred and Socorro directly. I'll review these materials and schedule a time to meet with them, that I might better understand those proposed ordinances. One of the speakers asked about the Health Department. I'd like to use this moment to give a status report. The state has been working to promulgate regulations that would govern the creation of municipal and county health departments, which hasn't been done in a hundred years. And at the same time, they're about to announce a application process that all jurisdictions would follow. There are a couple of things that I think can be reasonably expected in this process. One is, the city would need to make arrangements for laboratory services. We're going to look to do that on a contractual basis. We have a meeting scheduled soon with one of the independent health departments in this county, Long Beach, and we will talk to them about demand and capacity and some of those statistics. We also expect that there will be a need for a community health assessment and a community health improvement program. We're going to wait until the regulations are published, that we might cogently respond to those, and I'll keep you apprised. I think that's all I've got tonight. Oh, Mr. Orthello asked about traffic condition. I'd just like to highlight, we have been working hard with our traffic engineer and traffic enforcement bureaus to quantify the problems of the community in terms of substandard traffic conditions. On your consent calendar tonight, we're being recommended to you to approve nineteen different locations for different measures, including stop signs, they're being evaluated at six of those nineteen locations. So the process is, if someone would call the police department or, or the city manager's office, we will engage them directly and immediately with the traffic engineer. We'll take it through the city traffic committee, and we'll get back to the city council with the public recommendation for what we can do better. And so I will follow up with that resident as well. I think that's all I've got for response to public comments.
Thank you. Now for your city manager's report.
This could be the world's briefest city manager's report. I'd just like to highlight a couple of things. First, I just wanted to make mention of our State of the City and Employee Recognition Dinner last week that was held up at the Sportsplex. It was a really special evening. I thought there was a terrific spirit in the room. There were some three hundred people in attendance, as we celebrated the accomplishments of our employees and heard a speech from our mayor about the city's accomplishments as well. The event was video-recorded, and we'll have that taped back by tomorrow, and we'll get it up and disseminate that broadly. Just one of these pictures that's on that collage in front of you, the lower right, was really quite a moment. That's one of our firefighters, Joe Segaro, who said he was in the right place at the right time. That boy was, was dead at the scene and brought back, thanks to the good work of our fire Next, I wanted to make mention of an award that the city received. We work hard to affirm the dignity and the worth of all of the residents that we serve, and this was kind of an unexpected kudo that we got. West Covina was ranked as one of the top twenty-four cities in the country for Latinas that they might thrive financially. Their analysis considered education, poverty, income, and homeownership as key factors, financial success, taking social welfare indicators into account. They also included measures of access to healthcare and transportation, as well as cost of living and Latino business ownership. We scored really well on all those factors, and I just wanted to share that with the, with the council and the community. Finally, I just wanted to mention a couple of upcoming events. These are on the city's website. There's going to be a Filipino-American Heritage Month event at the Plaza West Covina on the twenty-third. Also, twenty-twenty-one Homecoming Ceremony with the Bruins at one forty-five that same day at Cortez Park. On the thirty-first, there's another event at the Plaza West Covina, a Halloween event. And then finally, we're planning a Veterans Day Ceremony for eleven o'clock on Thursday the eleventh, and that's all I've got this evening. And that's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One question?
Okay, the city manager, you forgot to mention the Sportsplex. We have a celebration of Filipino-American Heritage Month. We have about 2,000 people show up, and we have about almost 100 booths over there, and that is from 10 to 6. And this magnificent event, this is the first event in the Sportsplex. So I want to thank the Filipino-American and the mayor to put this together, have the entire city to celebrate, and to be proud of the Filipino-American. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto consent calendar. Councilors, are there anything you'd like to pull from the consent?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull five.
Five? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I would not want to pull items two and three, but I want to talk about them.
Is it a short comment?
Short.
Okay. If it's short, yes. Go ahead.
Item number two, or Agenda number two, the beautification of the sender medians has been close to my heart since before I was elected. Executing a cooperative agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, a nonprofit organization that develops young adults by employing them to provide services to improve communities, is a wonderful idea. These young adults will be part of beautifying West Covina's medians, bringing beautiful color and foliage. And I want to thank the city manager for making this happen and our city staff. And I will also mention that this was one of the items that I promised my constituents during my campaign. Another item is item three. This is near and dear to me, because this was a central issue during my campaign, and I have been working to get enhanced safety measures installed since I was elected almost a year ago. Public safety is number one to me. It's very important to me, and that's why I think that the installation of additional solar-powered flashing stop signs at dangerous West Covina intersections will save lives. Thank you, city manager, again, and our traffic committee for allowing this to happen. And that's another one of my items that I promised my constituents. So thank you.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item five?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Tabataba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viara?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Onto item number five, pulled by Protim Castellanos. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I know there's no fiscal impact to the city's general fund, but I'd like to ask Fire Chief and our Finance Director to discuss the details of where the money will come from and how it will be used.
Passing out a memo that Chief Capelli wrote that details the mutual aid and how it works for the city, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. I'll let him do that if you need it. But the money does come from, the way that mutual aid works, when they go out on these fires, the wildfires, and we get reimbursed for our time, plus there's a 10% to 15% variance there that they pay over and above to compensate us. And that money has to go back into the fire service. So that's where the money's coming from. The other vehicles, some of those vehicles on there had already been in the budget this year, and the money is available. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I'll turn it over to Chief Capelli to go over any other details that you want.
That answers my question as far as where it comes from, but yes, if you allow Chief Capelli to take it from there, please.
I have a question. Okay. On all this amount, okay, how much is from the general fund, and how much is from the mutual aid? Will you see the--
For the entire?
Yes. All the entire, you have $3.6 million, $556,000, $79,000, and $250,000. All this add together? Okay, so how much is from our general fund, and how much from our mutual aid?
None of it's from the general fund. When we gave the presentation on where the relief money was going, a lot of that was in there, with the exception, I believe, of the chief's vehicle. And that money's coming from that excess in the mutual aid that we get.
So the chief vehicle is not from general fund?
No, it's not.
Okay, so if we don't use the mutual aid fund, so we're going to return the money? Or we can keep to do something else?
Well, we have to use it for fire service, and I'd let the chief detail that more.
For the equipment. Okay, thank you.
So basically, when we go out on responses, they give us reimbursement dollar for dollar for all of our expenses. They also reimburse us time for the vehicles, because they know there's wear and tear, a lot of damage, so they give us that money back for the time, the federal amount, regulated amounts for reimbursement, as well as 10% for insurances and 10% for administrative. So that helps the city recover things that we lost, equipment, training, we can get to prepare to go, and also vehicles, and help reimburse when we damage vehicles and we replace our vehicles within the city, as well as the firefighters get knowledge, skills, and abilities out on these things to help us back here at home.
Did you have additional questions? Councilmember?
So how much regularly, and I know it depends on how we get called for the mutual aid, but roughly, okay, like last year, okay, what's the percentage, how much we get mutual aid money from our system to all the fire station at our location? I know we went to a lot. We sent two, three, four engine to fight the wildfire, so hopefully this year it's not been that bad. But how much do we receive from the mutual aid?
So this program to be part of the mutual aid system was something West Covina Fire Department rarely, if at all, participated in the last, you know, prior to the last two years, to where we've gotten people trained and available to be part of these teams. Some of them are specialized teams respond. And last year, to answer your question, in 2021, we budgeted an expenditure amount of $1.1 million. We budgeted a revenue of $1.4 million, and our actual expenditure was $1,105,000. And actual revenue, having it in two lines, I don't know it by heart, but our actual net revenue was $355,000 that we netted. That didn't cost us anything. It was above and beyond what we spent.
And how about overtime? Were they reimbursed our overtime?
Nothing for overtime. Even though we expend the overtime number, that's why it's a separate budget item, we get paid back dollar for dollar, so it's a one.
So we get paid back by the overtime. At the same time, they have given us for our equipment, we're entitled, okay, that kind of thing. So right now, we come out, the surplus would be how much? Behind yous?
For last year was $355,799. For example, for this year, we're already for net revenue is going to be about $600,000. As you know, it's been a very busy first six months, and it's anticipated even more. So we participate a lot. We go out there and we help, because we get a lot of mutual aid as well.
You deserve the car. So what kind of car you want to have? Okay, hopefully shop local, using our, we have a lot of dealer. What kind of car the chief's in mind? We'll do it.
We're using Fleet Services, because it also uses, since the chief responds to incidents--
Got it. That has to be a special made.
So it's a special service, selective services type.
Got it. Thank you so much, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve number five.
Is there a second?
Second. Thank you so much.
Roll call, please.
Appreciate. Thank you, Robin.
Councilmember Tabataba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viara?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Now onto the public hearing. Did everyone submit a public comment card to the city clerk for either for or against? If you have not, please submit it to our city clerk. City clerk, how many speakers do we have?
I have 10 in favor, 13 in opposition, and three neither in favor or opposed.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have 10 in favor, 13 in opposition, and three neither in favor or opposed.
Okay. So then I'd like to announce that public comments will be limited to two minutes to give everybody an opportunity to speak without having them stay too late. But I just wanted to, okay, we'll go ahead to item number six. Matter set for public hearing, can we hear the-- This matter set for public hearing consists of consideration approved general plan amendment number 20-03, zone change number 20-04, precise plan number 20-48, tree removal permit number 21-12, tentative parcel map number 83444, development agreement number 21-01, and a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact to repurpose an existing 177,240 square-foot building as an Amazon delivery station on property located at 1211 Bedio Street. City clerk, is verified the proper legal notice has been given?
Mayor, proper legal notice has been given.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing on the project. There'll be first the presentation of the staff report, then we will hear those in favor of the project, then those opposed. Mr. Cármeni, who will present the staff report?
Assistant City Manager Paulina Morales will present the report this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and councilmembers, or Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Before you this evening is an application by the property owner for the following entitlements: a precise plan, a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from civic public institution to industrial, a zone change to change the zoning back to manufacturing or M1, a tentative parcel map, a tree removal permit, a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, and a development agreement. Overview of the project, the property owner is acquiring the former Faith Community Church property that is 21.2 acres and is repurposing the existing 177,000 square-foot building and parking lot into a last mile delivery station. This is a location of the site. As I mentioned, it's the former Faith Community Church location. You can see the surrounding uses, it's single-family homes to the south, commercial industrial to the west, more residential to the east of the project, residential to the north. The proposed tenants' delivery station will operate 24 hours, seven days a week. Employee and delivery shifts are designed to avoid typical commute peak periods. No vans or flex drivers will be entering or exiting the site after 10:00 p.m. The delivery vans will load and depart at a rate of 36 vans every 20 minutes to facilitate a regulated traffic flow onto the surrounding area. The flex drivers will load and depart every 15 minutes. So here's just depiction, this is where the line haul or tractor trailers would both enter and exit from the designated truck route off San Bernardino. This is depicted in the red highlights, so that's where they'll enter and exit. This yellow depicts where the employee cars and parking lot area is. They will enter and also exit from San Bernardino. There is anticipated to be 70 employees per shift, and this last green area shows where the delivery van and flex drivers will enter and exit. They will be able to enter along the four entrances along Bedillo, and they will exit the site on San Bernardino Road. Part of the application also includes the removal of three significant ficus trees that are located by the entrance on San Bernardino Road. The traffic impact, so the project generation is 914 daily trips, 457 vehicles in and out. These are the numbers compared to 2019 pre-COVID, and I will have Jana Robbins, our traffic engineer, elaborate on the traffic impact study that was conducted for the project. This project does include a development agreement. There is a $4 million total sales tax fee that the city will be receiving. There are conditions of approval as part of the development agreement. They will annual driveway count to monitor number of vehicles. They will maintain a 24-hour, seven complaint hotline. They will have backup alarms, work with, and will work with the city to pursue operational changes. Left turn pocket on San Bernardino Road. No public pickup of packages will be allowed on the site. All individual consultants, contractors, or self-employed drivers maintain a West Covina business license, and they will, in good faith, purchase supplies and services from West Covina-based businesses, and also request consultants and contractors to also patronize local businesses. As part of the Planning Commission and communication with the neighbors, the property owner has been working with the adjacent community, which had proposed the following conditions. I believe they had come to the agreement on the following items: a 12-foot-high masonry wall along the easternly property line, external lighting consistent with the existing lighting. They would prohibit smoking and playing music with windows open within 50 feet of the easternly property line from the vehicles, and then no speakers or megaphones to be used in the exterior, and then provide employee incentives to subsidize alternative transportation expenses. In addition, we held two Planning Commission hearings. On the October 4th, our Planning Commission approved a recommendation to the city council and added additional conditions of approval. Those are listed there. Part of it was to revise some of the traffic count to include the peak season, prohibit off-site parking, prohibit the use of drones, amend the agreement so that the city is compensated for the 20-year term of the development agreement, revise the agreement to require the operator to provide the city a list of all consultants and contractors, including self-employed or drivers, limit the vehicle idling, and limit the hours of operation for the van parking area. A mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact was conducted for the project, and we will have Jim Hunter, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here in person, but is on the phone, and we do have his partner that is here as well to address questions regarding CEQA. Before I turn it over, I will have Jim Hunter present on this mitigated deck. Okay, I will have Jana Robbins, our traffic engineer, do her presentation while we get them settled. Can you hear us, Jim? I'm going to give a quick overview of the traffic study. Jana Robbins, we are the traffic and engineering consultant for the city, so we did not prepare the report. I'm just giving a brief overview of the report that was prepared. The report was prepared by NV5 engineers and consultants. They had to follow the City of West Covina guidelines, traffic study guidelines, as well as the City of Covina traffic study guidelines, since several intersections were in both They included nine intersections, and we, as shown up on the screen, one, the roadway is San Bernardino Road, which is a minor arterial, which is a truck route. Right now, it has about 16,000 vehicles per day on the road. The posted speed limit is 40 miles an hour. Then we have Bedillo, which is on the other side of the project. It has about 18,000 vehicles per day, which is a principal, and it's classified as a principal arterial with a posted speed limit of 45 miles per hour. This is not a truck route, so that's why Paulina, they explained the access to--
So typically, when we do trip generation for a project, we use typical commute hours, which is 7:00 to 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 6:00 PM. In this case, the Amazon site is pretty much, if you look at the yellow, they have very little traffic during peak hours, but there, the peak generator is from 10:00 to 11:00 AM and 8:00 to 9:00 PM. So they also studied this condition for all scenarios, and that is in the green highlight. As you can see, there's quite a difference in the count for the trip generation. That's how they came up with Table 2, project trip generation. The, it's a summary of the highest one hour for each type of vehicle that's coming in and out of their site. And they have AM peak hour of the adjacent street, which is the typical peak hour, and then they have the AM and PM of the generator, which is the peak hour of the Amazon site. This is the site plan, as Paulina explained. One thing to note, the driveway number five, the top right, will be limited to right-in, right-out only. The driveway number four is the vans exit only. And the number two is a, their driveway will align with Cutter Way, and that will be signalized. The driveway one and two, there's a median on Bedillo, so that's also right-in, right-out only. Driveways three and four will have full access. A comment that came up previously was the truck routes. West Covina has dedicated truck routes. All trucks that come to this site have to travel on dedicated truck routes. For West Covina, Azusa Avenue, San Bernardino Road are the truck routes. Bedillo is not a truck route. Lark Ellen is not a truck route. Vincent is not a truck route. City of Covina, they have the same, Azusa Avenue is a truck route. Bedillo Street, Azusa to Grand, San Bernardino Road, W, West City Limit to Grand is a truck route, and Workman Street is a truck route. So we look at level of service. In the old days, it's A through F. So as part of this, the city at its discretion is allowed to have them look at level of service as well as what's the VMT, the vehicle miles traveled. So it's the typical, they looked at existing conditions, they added project to it, then they looked at cumulative plus project, cumulative being all the related projects in the area. I just put a summary, West Covina had 10 projects, Covina 19, and Balden Park 19 projects that were rolled into their cumulative base numbers. So now we get into the intersection capacity. So this table, Table 5A, is the no build is without, this is the existing conditions without Amazon, and this is during typical commute hours. And then with the build condition, it is with Amazon traffic during those peak commute hours. And as you can see, we follow our guidelines, if there's, both cities have, it has to increase V over C by .02 or more, and be at E or F to be considered deficient. Now, Bedillo to Azusa is at an E, but it, the project didn't make it an E, continues to be an AE. And if you look at the level service increase, it's less than what is considered significant, so there is no impacts. Now, we look at the generator peak, so this is where we get more traffic from Amazon, but less traffic for the base conditions. So the operations of the intersections are much better, most of them are A and B, but this is the peak hour of generator is 10:00 to 11:00 AM and 8:00 to 9:00 PM. So it's an offset. You have less base traffic, more Amazon traffic. Same, does it increase a V over C? And it's no, so there's no significant impacts. Table 5C is cumulative conditions. Now, because the worst case for the intersections are the commute time, they looked at the no build and then with Amazon. And as you can see, there, some of the intersections are level service E, but there is not the, they do not exceed the V over C capacity of .02, so there is no significant impact. When is an intersection considered to be impacted by project traffic is kind of what I was saying. West Covina, its intersection is E or worse, so it's E or F, and an increase of .02 or more. Sorry, get to my notes here. And then Covina is D or better, is okay, E or F is bad, but it's also .02 V over C increase to have project determine if its project has significant impacts. So under level service, a project will not impact any of the study intersections following the West Covina and the City of Covina traffic study guidelines. And then although, just to note, although Bedillo and Azusa is projected to operate LOS E under AM and PM peak condition, the project does not increase the V over C by .02 or more, so there's no significant impact. To note, there will be a signal at Cutter Way at the driveway number two, they label it. So that'll have a signal, and it'll have left turn pockets with pedestrian crossing. So this was done, so that trucks coming in, they're not sitting in the travel lane on San Bernardino Road. They have a dedicated left turn pocket, and that will have to be submitted to the City of West Covina as well as the City of Covina. The City of Covina owns the San Bernardino Road. West Covina is from the sidewalk to the site, Covina has the road. So then another part of it is the vehicle miles traveled. So they also had to do a VMT analysis. That's included in the West Covina's traffic study guidelines. So West Covina has adopted criteria for evaluating the vehicle miles traveled. And a project, as we've discussed in the past, can be screened if they have less than 110 daily trips, be in a TPA transit priority area, or is considered in a low VMT area. And this is not the case, so they had to use the screening tool that was in the West Covina guidelines to determine the VMT. So they had to prepare a VMT. Basically, they had a little bit of vehicle miles traveled, so they had to be less than the threshold that the city had adopted. It's quite technical, but on the next slide, we have this tool that is in our City of West Covina guidelines. If you see, the project generated 31.82 vehicle miles traveled, and the baseline is 35.02, but they have to fall 15% below that. So in order to get to that level, the city, the Amazon has to provide some traffic demand mitigation measures. And this included setting up subsidized alternative transportation expenses, I have it listed here, preferential parking for car-van pools close to the building entrance, and kiosk built-in boards where transit and ride-sharing options are posted to provide a ride matching platform, and assigns employee transportation coordinator to encourage the use of alternative transportation options. So application, if they put these in, this is following the state mandate, even though it's kind of an odd thing, we no longer look at improving intersections, it's on reducing vehicle miles. So if they add these measures, they would qualify as, it's called TP11, Alternative Transportation Benefits. And this gets the VMT per service population below the threshold of 29.72. So even V and T, they're significant, they are below the significance threshold, so the project is able to mitigate any project impacts. This is the tool, as I explained. And the other thing is the peak season operations, per the traffic impact analysis. I think Paulina went over this in hers. They looked at, there will be an increase in some of the associates, they're assuming, and this is the period, I believe, from Thanksgiving to the end of the year. So basically, the ITU manuals and trip generation, we use traffic generation based on the normal operations. We don't do it for the peak one or two, one month out of the year, because if we started building lots of parking lots for Christmas season, then we would have an asphalt parking lot the rest of the 10 months. So they did not do a analysis of the peak season, so this is pretty much what was in the traffic study. They said that there would be a second shift of 100 to 125 associates, additional dispatched shift with 100 to 125 vans leaving in the AM and returning in the PM. There would be twice the number of line haul trucks, but they would become after 6:00 PM and before 10:00 PM. So this would equal 28 in and 28 out, which is 56 versus the 28 that they're showing in the regular part of the year. And they're claiming that the project traffic would be spread throughout the day. And that's the end of the traffic.
If City Council doesn't mind, I'd like to hold our questions until public comment. I'd like to hear from them first. Are you guys okay with that? We'll save our questions till at the end? Okay. So we're going to go to public comments, but I just want to make it clear before we continue that I just want to remind everybody that there still needs to be order in this chamber. I won't allow chaos or ruckus to occur, and I just ask for everybody to respect everyone who's speaking, whether they're for or against it. If there is disruption that just continues, we'll have the Sergeant of Arms escort you out. And if it just gets really bad, then we'll just clear the chambers and just allow the speaker to speak. So I just want to put it out there first, and we just hope that we can have a cordial speaker. So with that in mind, we shall begin. Is there first, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Mayor, I have 12 in favor.
Okay, proceed.
Everyone, just so you know, I would like the first five speakers to line up in front of the podium, I will announce to you, beginning with Justin Satterfield, followed by Scott Sernegos, followed by Scott Murray, followed by Donald Lamb, and followed by Eric Guyer.
Madam Mayor, I am so sorry. We weren't really done with our presentation, I'll wrap it up real quick.
There's more presentation? Okay.
Staff is recommending that the City Council approve the land use applications tonight, and the applicant is here to answer any questions. And that's it.
Okay, that's it? Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead and proceed.
Good evening. So I'm speaking on behalf of Amazon tonight. I think we all know, I think we all know, you know, how beneficial it is to community. But I want to speak to a huge benefit that Amazon offers that no one else does, and that's their Career Choice Program. My wife's nephew graduated from high school last year, and like a lot of students, wasn't sold on college due to a four-year degree costing as much as a house. He was able to get on with the Amazon during COVID as a package sorter, and while there, got into the Career Choice Program, where Amazon not only offered classes, but reimbursed you for college classes with no strings attached. He's now training in the field of IT, and it's a game changer for him. Not only has his pay increased, he has a career to look forward to, not just at Amazon, but anywhere he wants to go. We all know the benefits that higher education has and earning potential, so imagine the impact for West Covina where less than 30% of its workforce is college educated. Amazon will educate our workforce, which in turn will attract more businesses, which is a win-win for everybody. Think of all the families here that will benefit from the Career Choice Program that Amazon offers that nobody else does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Sernegos.
Good evening. Just to really touch on the unemployment issue that we have in the state, this project would definitely help that in immediate future. Me being a dad, my mom, excuse me, my wife works nights, and so I have a three-year-old son at home. So the convenience of Amazon, when it comes down for me being able to purchase groceries or the convenience of household goods, that has been a definite help so far. Having a facility like this in your guys' community definitely is a positive. Really, I mean, when it comes down to, you know, Amazon as, it's really the cutting edge, it's the future of where this world is going. And just, we really forward to potentially having this facility in your guys' community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Murray, followed by Donald Lamb, followed by Eric Guyer. If I could please have you all line up. Our next speaker is Eric Guyer, followed by Danny Ryan, followed by David Valdez.
Good evening, my name is Eric Guyer. I am legal counsel for the owner of Lark Ellen Village, a community of 122 affordable housing units located at 1350 East San Bernardino Road. These units were developed with city funding. Lark Ellen Village shares a 650-foot property line with the project, the project's eastern boundary. Given the nature of the project and the residential environment of Lark Ellen Village, we had concern, concerns about the project's operation, which we shared with the planning commission. We appreciate how receptive the city has been to our concerns and feedback, particularly the planning commission's attention paid to activities in the parking lot. We have engaged in extensive discussions with the project applicant, which has resulted in our support for the project, provided the city includes specific conditions in the development agreement concerning prohibiting van activity and minimizing other vehicle activity in the eastern parking lot between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and the construction of a sound wall along the shared property line, among others. Our understanding is that the project applicant shared these proposed conditions with the city council, and we did as well, and correspondence sent to your attention yesterday. We very much appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with us and its commitment to being a good neighbor. Just to emphasize the point, we fully support this project with the incorporation of those conditions. As a developer ourselves, we understand the challenges of the entitlement process and that balancing many interests is not always very easy. We were sincere when we said we did not want to hold up or stop the project, and we are pleased that through our collective efforts, we have come to a mutual agreeable situation where the project can be a meaningful part of the city while being a good neighbor at the same time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Our next speaker is Danny Ryan, followed by David Valdez, followed by Cheryl Perez.
Excuse me, if I look up or down a little bit, I put a few notes here, because sometimes I forget what I'm saying. I had the fortunate time to come here last time, there was a little discussion. It was very insightful for me, so I could find out a little more about what's going on. Amazon spoke, we had some opposers. I'd say, there was a few things that really hit home to me. Being a concerned resident was one, obviously, the number one thing was unemployment rate in West Covina. We're at 11.3% when the nation and states is around, sorry, the state of California is around 6%. I spoke about this last time, but I wanted to speak to you because I have not met you yet. We're almost double of what the state is, has for unemployment, which is, I think, outrageous when we're sitting here possibly opposing a project that can employ hundreds of people when we are actually double what the unemployment rate is. You're not taking this opportunity, I feel, to take on these hundreds of jobs from Amazon. We have a warehouse that they're going to make, last time the gentleman spoke that it was a church that was going to be vacant soon, that Amazon, if it worked out, they're going to go in. That concerns some of the neighbors, which I understand and I get, but we also need to think, if they are vacant, we also need to worry about the homeless overtaking these areas. The biggest thing to me was the educational funding I heard about. Basically, I'm sorry, I'm getting nervous here, because I'm watching the darn clock tick down, but the education, the importance of this, as Amazon was speaking in regards to that they are that Amazon, if it worked out, they're gonna go in. That concerns some of the neighbors, which I understand and I get, but we also need to think if they are vacant, we also need to worry about the homeless overtaking these areas. The biggest thing to me was the educational funding I heard about. Basically, I'm sorry, I'm getting nervous here, because I'm watching the darn clock tick down, but the education, the importance of this, as Amazon was speaking in regards to that they are funding college students, and when you go in and working for them, they're paying for college education. That is huge to me and our families as well, because I come from a family where we could not afford to possibly put us, my brothers and sisters, in school simply because my parents could not afford college. Amazon is providing that opportunity for us, and I think that is wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Valdez, followed by Cheryl Perez, followed by Corinne Goodwin.
Well, I was here in the last meeting, and like I said, it was more of the work that they're creating for us, for our kids that are graduating high school, like my sister, my brother-in-law, there's people that need that work and the help for the college and the school. So I think bringing Amazon here is going to help a lot, especially, like they said, the church was just creating traffic and not helping out the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Perez, followed by Corinne Goodwin, followed by Jeremy Beck.
So my name is Cheryl Perez, and I manage Lark Ellen Village, which will be the partner, the property right next door to the project. And I first want to say that the city of West Covina has been a great support to our apartments. We've been in a partnership now for almost 23 years we're going on. I believe our contract is another 35 years, and I really appreciate that when I came to the last two meetings, that you took the time to listen to our concerns and also to Green Law Development for listening to our concerns. So I want to say thank you for that. And I'm here to say that I am in support of the project. We feel very fortunate that we were able to work out the problem and the issue of the wall between the properties and also the quiet hours in the evening, so from 11:00 to 6:00 AM. We're appreciative for that. And I also, I'm grateful that the city listened to our concerns, the developer also listened, and as was said earlier, we are also developers, so we understand the concerns of the city when these projects go in. And thank you again for listening. And also, I am looking forward to Amazon bringing in jobs into the community. I know that there are some people here tonight, because they're not the union jobs that they were hoping for, but like the gentleman said earlier, jobs are very important right now. I know many of my residents are without a job, and there's quite a few of them that are looking forward to Amazon going in. And lastly, I just want to say that I hope that we can build a relationship with Amazon Green Law as the property next door to create an environment there within the community. And, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Corinne Goodwin, followed by Jeremy Beck, followed by Adam Highland.
I started using Amazon a little over 10 years ago after the birth of my son. Since then, I have continued to use their services for everything from everyday necessities to home goods, gifts, medical and cleaning supplies. Amazon provides an invaluable service that allows people to shop from the safety and comfort of their homes and have things delivered directly to their door. This is a vital service now more than ever, especially during these harsh times of COVID-19. West Covina's unemployment rates are at 11.3%. A local distribution center would provide jobs for several hundred local residents and allow for improved services to our community. Amazon is committed to supporting their employees by offering wages that are more than double the federal minimum wage, a competitive benefits package, and will even fund the full college tuitions. Our community should welcome this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeremy Beck, followed by Adam Highland, followed by Chase O.
Good evening, City Council. I too was here at the last meeting. I'm for Amazon. I believe they're a decent company. They do great things for their employees. You know, people have already spoke on unemployment for the city. I know that, you know, certain people are here that don't like that, but, you know, Amazon is here to provide jobs. They provide further education, they provide benefits for their employees, they pay higher than minimum wage from the start. You know, you're getting $4 million upfront from Amazon and $80 million a year from what I've heard from the last meeting. You know, Amazon's doing a lot to make this happen. I'd like to see it happen. I know there's other people here that oppose it, but, you know, they gotta ask themselves, what are they doing for the city of West Covina? We know what Amazon's doing, what are they doing? So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adam Highland, followed by Chase O.
So I think this is a great thing. I think Amazon coming to our city is great. My mom personally works for Amazon, and she's a senior citizen, and they treat her well. I have a teenage daughter, I have a teenage son, and the amount of jobs that Amazon provides to the city will be a great thing. I would love that this is their starter job. I'd love that they come and work for Amazon rather than at a grocery store, because I hear about all the great things that they do for their employees. We heard about the traffic impacts, what it's gonna have on the city. That's my biggest concern when I heard about this, and it seems like it's gonna be nothing whatsoever. So if we have Amazon coming to our city, and they're providing jobs, and they're providing revenue, and there's no traffic impact, I don't see any negative to this. I think it's a great thing, and I think we move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chase O.
Hello, good evening. How are you guys? I believe Amazon is a great situation for the city to bring in jobs, that we have a great unemployment rate in this great state of California. I believe the tax revenue alone will be great towards the city, listening earlier towards all the issues that are involved. And I just think it's a great thing towards everyone, that everyone can benefit instead of being individualized, and we can all worship off of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was our last speaker. However, there were nine individuals who expressed their support for the item via agenda positions.
Okay, now we'll move to those who would speak in opposition to the project.
Madam Mayor, I have 16 in opposition.
Okay, proceed.
Our first speaker is Marie Thomas, followed by Shazad Shisgar, followed by Jim Grivich.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Marie Thomas, and I'm a 50-year resident of West Covina. I'm here to voice my concern about the building of the Amazon Distribution Center in our city. I have read of reports that these warehouses wreak havoc on the environment in the area surrounding the building. The delivery trucks generate untold amounts of greenhouse gases, ozone, and particulate matters. The air pollution, the heat from a warming climate change, and a drought all contribute to poor health conditions in our community. All of our residents, especially our seniors and our children, will be impacted in the short run and in the long run by the pollution, the traffic, and the noise emanating from the building. Every time I read the flyers that you council members pass out during election time, I notice how you emphasize the safety and health of our community. Today, you will get an opportunity to show how much you really care about our health and safety. Since our city has been divided into districts, I would like to know how my representative, Rosario Diaz, feels about this issue involving Amazon and the reasons why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shazad Shisgar, followed by Jim Grivich, followed by Jocelyn Ruiz.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon and evening. When I heard about this project, I kind of got excited because I thought, oh, wonderful, we're gonna have jobs here, even though I knew there was gonna be a negative impact on our environment and the streets and roads that are gonna be impacted with wear and tear of these trucks that we would eventually would have to pay for to fix. I thought, you know what, we need jobs. Well, in reviewing some of this literature, I found that while Amazon claims they're creating thousands of jobs, they actually ignore how their business model is destroying tens of thousands of retail jobs through automation.
Guys, order, please.
Amazon has eradicated jobs, small businesses, and countless American retailers across the nation, and I for one don't want our city to be a part of that. Also, Market Watch has estimated that Amazon's growth could cause as many as one and a half million retail jobs to be lost in five years. So although Amazon does create jobs, they also eliminate jobs in other sectors of our economy. The benefits do not outweigh the negative consequences of this business model in general. But what about jobs created by the fulfillment centers? In May of 2020, Anna Walters, a researcher at the University of Madison, Wisconsin, reviewed literature and looked into Amazon's warehouses or fulfillment centers and their impacts on county-level employment. A similar study was done by the Economic Policy Institute, and both studies found that Amazon fulfillment centers do not generate broad-based employment growths, and its benefits in this area do not outweigh the negative impacts on local municipalities. So I urge you guys to rethink or think about not approving this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Grivich, followed by Jocelyn Ruiz, followed by Jesus Neri. And actually, before Mr. Grivich begins, he actually has something he'd like me to pass out, so I'll be doing that now.
Off topic for just a second, the Dodgers won in spectacular fashion tonight in the Now to speak to the subject at hand, I have mixed feelings on this project, and I want to talk about what my issue is. My issue is that the Planning Commission had, I felt, one of the best debates I've ever heard on any subject on this subject at their last meeting. It went on for a long time, they had very thoughtful comments, and what's really disturbing to me is they made recommendations for changing the agreement, very specific recommendations. They're listed in your staff report. However, those recommendations are not included in what's on your agenda for action tonight, and that's very disturbing to me. I want to focus on just one thing, because I think it's the most important thing. There was deep concern about the traffic impact. And specifically, what was put in was a desire to limit the number of trips per day, because the representatives from Amazon kept saying, well, we'll have about this many or an average of this many, and it was always very vague. It was obvious that there was no desire to have a true limit. So they found a number in one of the reports that said the maximum would be 900. So they put in, they recommended a limit of 900 trips a day. And yet, when you look at the actual document that's in front of you, all it says is, well, once a year, we'll count how many cars at the choosing of Amazon, when that will be. Once a year, we'll count, and if it's more than 900, then we'll sit down and talk again about what it means. That's, you can't have an agreement that's agreed to have an agreement sometime in the future. You have to put a limit, so I'd like you to amend it to put in the language that I have here that says it's a real limit, 900 a day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jocelyn Ruiz, followed by Jesus Neri, followed by Luis Ferrado.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to speak because everyone who came here to speak in favor of the project was talking about the jobs that Amazon is going to create. So I just want to share some data that Amazon itself has presented about the kind of jobs that they offer their workers. And these are data that they themselves report to OSHA. And so for Amazon warehouse workers, they are injured at a rate of 13.11 per 100 workers. For all other employers that are not Amazon in the same industry, that number is four. So that means that Amazon warehouse workers for delivery stations here in LA County specifically is 3.2 times higher than other employers. In addition, 96% of all of the injuries were so severe that workers needed either accommodations or had to miss work entirely. And when workers had to miss work for their injuries, they missed an average of 54 days. That's almost two months of work loss because of their injuries. And for all the years that data's available, Amazon's rate on injuries per worker is higher than the rest of the warehousing industry. They're getting, Amazon warehouse workers are getting injured more frequently, more severely, and need more time to recover from those injuries than non-Amazon warehouse workers. Does the City Council want an injury meal in their community? Are these the kinds of jobs that we want to offer for our youth? How are City Council members going to react when we start seeing 18, 19-year-olds with lifelong injuries? This community deserves better, and as elected, I hope that you prioritize your community's well-being over corporate profits. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jesus Neri, followed by Luis Ferrado.
I'm not a resident of West Covina. I am a Teamster supporting one of my Teamster brothers that lives here in West Covina. My opposition to Amazon is that they have not reported double the work injury in the workplace. It's 10% in the industrial company than 5% of the industrial company, so their injuries are more double. I would ask the City Council to oppose this contract with Amazon, not just on traffic, but on the way they treat their employees, by not having a union, not having a contract, not having benefits, not having a 401K plan or a pension plan. So, there was a comment on a YouTube video that I had seen, and one of those things was how they treated their employees. And I'm gonna refer them to apples and oranges. And the reason why I say an Amazon employee is an orange, Amazon will squeeze that orange till it's completely out of juice. And once it's done, they will throw it away, pick up another orange, and squeeze that orange till it's completely out of juice. Whether a Teamster employee has a contract, has a voice, and has a union to back them up, and that's why I'm here, to back up my Teamster employee, not just a UPS employee, but a Teamster brother or a Teamster sister, an apple, you cannot squeeze and take the juice out of that apple, because it's strong. And it's strong are our union members that have a voice to back us up. I myself, I'm a shop steward, I represent over 130 employees in my center, and I would not allow corporate America to bring down my brothers and sisters. So like I said, I would just, I would like for the City Council to oppose this. I'm out of time, and I would just like for you guys to oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luis Ferrado, followed by Armando Santos, followed by David Enriquez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council people. I've been a resident for 28 years in the city. I represent District 4. I've been driving out for almost 15 years. I know firsthand that the traffic is a big issue that's not really been addressed, but sort of has been. We have only seen operations from Amazon briefly within less than five years now, and many cities around us have severely impacted the community and its residents. There is so much to say and acknowledge about Amazon and not how, not only how they treat their they treat their employees, but also their safety concerns around the community. I personally have seen drivers go up to people's driveways, run across the streets, parked on different sides of the streets. They mobilize on efficiency, but they lack safety. And I've seen firsthand that people have been hurt. I've seen a lot of complaints through multiple cities. I work in Pasadena. I've been in Armani, several cities around us, and I am just here to say that this is not good for the community. I've been in part of this community for 28 years. I bought my first home here. I still live here. My family lives here. It's, it's, it's really hard to explain everything because I, there really is so much to explain, and I'm kind of nervous about this. But I'm here to represent my union, which I hold very strong. They, they treat their employees very terribly, and I believe this is not good for the community and it will destroy a lot and create, will it create jobs? Possibly. Pay full jobs? No. It will, it will damage other jobs around the community as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Armando Santos, followed by David Enriquez, followed by Robert Northoff.
Thank you. My name is Armando Santos, and I happen to live in West Covina for over 45 years now, and I'm lucky to say my parents still live in the same house that I grew up in. And I also serve as a scoutmaster in West Covina for 243. I want to thank the council for many years of support. I normally don't speak up, but tonight, I'm here to speak up about something, and it's about Amazon moving into my community. I happen to live right around the corner. My children went to the elementary school that's right around the corner. We also went to the middle school that's right up the street. Something that's not talked about in the traffic study is foot traffic. There are children every, not only in the morning, not only going home from school, but in between. They have different hours. They have short days. It's, it's the children that I'm concerned about. It's the future families that, that, you know, they're going to see more traffic. They will. They're going to see trucks, these vans zooming through my street because it's going, it's going to be a shortcut coming down the Stell Avenue. It's going to be a shortcut. This company has taken away great union jobs. I'm lucky to say I've been working 33 years without an accident, without an injury because I was trained well, and this company knows what it takes to last for over 100 years with safety. And I just hope everybody can hear what UPS has done and just what a good union job is worth. Biggest concern, like I said, I don't, normally don't speak out, but it's the foot traffic that I'm concerned about in my neighborhood. Like I said, I do live in West Covina, right around the corner, and that concerns me very much for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Enriquez, followed by Robert Northoff, followed by Denise Lincoln.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Lopez Vialdo and members of the council. My name is David Enriquez. I'm a business agent for Teamsters Local 396, where I proudly represent UPS drivers. Some of the drivers that I represent live right here in the city of West Covina, and I'm proud to say that because of our union contract, they earn between $30 and $40 an hour. There are some uneducated people that think that UPS drivers are overpaid, but that is because they are trained to be safe for the public safety as opposed to Amazon drivers. They are trained to get the packages delivered safely, get back to the hub, and keep the public safety in mind at all times. That's a real middle-class job, unlike the low-wage jobs that this Amazon facility is going to create. I'd also like to remind you that Amazon, the company for who you're bending over backwards to oblige, is worth an estimated $1.7 trillion. $1.7 trillion. Yet, this city will only receive a mere $4 million out of that company, which is peanuts to them. In Amazon terms, they're not even giving you one penny of their while to create low-wage, backbreaking jobs, tear up your roads, and pollute your community. I think your residents deserve better than this. Amazon can certainly afford to do better. With that, I'll leave this penny here for your thoughts.
Our next speaker is Robert Northoff, followed by Denise Lincoln, followed by Victor Mineros.
Good evening, Mayor Lopez Vialdo, members of the council. My name is Rob Northoff, and I am the Policy Director of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, where we proudly represent over 800,000 hard-working women and men across all industries here in Los Angeles County, several of whom live right here in West Covina. And I'm here to speak in strong opposition to item number six because, quite honestly, there needs to be a more thorough and transparent process and more public input so folks can fully understand what's at stake and here's why. Have you all had the chance to really explain to the residents of West Covina that this Amazon facility will create a slew of low-wage, backbreaking jobs? And that's why Amazon facilities like the one being proposed here tonight have over 100% turnover. We talk about jobs, but they chew them up and spit them out. The person who's there today will not be there a year from now. What kind of a job is that? And not only that, you already heard that these jobs are terrible. They hurt people. People go and get hurt. People are getting injured at triple the rate in an Amazon facility than other companies here in this industry. Also, have you explained to your residents that the proposed Amazon facility is going to drastically increase traffic for the surrounding communities? There will be more wear and tear on your roads, more traffic congestion, more potholes, and more toxic emissions from the bombardment of Amazon trucks as they, as they parade up and down the streets of West Covina? And lastly, have you told your residents that your average wage for a worker at an Amazon facility like the one being voted on here tonight pays just above minimum wage, which means that you will need three of these jobs, kind of one, two, three of these jobs in order to afford a two-bedroom apartment, which means a mom and father working full-time at this facility will still fall short and not be able to pay the rent? Is that the kind of jobs that we want here in West Covina? And have you shared all of this with your residents so they fully know what's at stake here tonight? Because if you did, I'm sure that they'd be standing here with us in opposition to this actual project. Your residents deserve better, and you should delay voting on this until we can have a more thorough process. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Denise Lincoln, followed by Victor Mineros, followed by Françoise Colton. I'm sorry, it's Denise Lincoln.
Is Denise Lincoln here? Then we'll go on to the next.
Victor Mineros.
Victor? Thank you.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'm here to speak opposed of this project. This project's going to bring is what you have already heard, low jobs, and it's going to compete against good jobs. Everybody who spoke for this project said it's going to bring jobs, but not one person, if you guys listen very carefully, not one person for this project said good jobs. Are we scared to say good jobs? Are we scared to bring union jobs to a town? These are dead-end jobs. They said they're going to bring education. They're not going to educate everybody. Not everybody wants an education. People want to work. These jobs are not going to be good for your community. We got to bring good jobs. These jobs are not going to be good. They're going to hurt your constituents. I urge you, I urge you to vote no on this Agenda Item Six. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Françoise Colton, followed by Lou Cruz, followed by Robinson.
Hi, Mayor. Hello, council. My name is Françoise Colton. I'm a West Covina resident, and I live in the northern part of District One. So basically, just to give a little history, initially, I thought, oh, cool, you know, there's going to be some new jobs here, you know? That's great. Myself being a semi-retired HR regional senior manager, it's like, I know we need jobs. But the more I looked into it, the more I realized these are not the kind of jobs that we want. There are many reasons, but I oppose it for a multitude of reasons. One of them is because the back of my house is Bedillo, you know? I'd be right there in the, in the thick of it, unfortunately. But traffic and pollution are a big deal. When we talk about pollution, we're talking about noise and air quality pollution. You know, we saw in the traffic demonstration, presentation information about all the delivery vans and the tractor trailers and the 24/7. You know, again, having a history in HR, I know people who did not want to work there. They wanted to make more money, but they knew that at, at that company, the turnover is like 100%. People were not happy. People were working like crazy long hours. And so regardless of what the company says in terms of what the hours would be like, and I'm sure they'll, they'll go outside of the, the borders of that and take advantage of that. Also, I'd like you to consider a statement by an urban planner, Daniel Fleming, president of the Economic Roundtable, who said, and I quote, "It would be horrific if you owned a home next to one of these distribution centers," end quote. So it's not healthy. There are schools nearby, daycare centers, hospitals. It just goes on and on. So I just hope that you will really consider all of this and not let Amazon ruin our community. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Lou Cruz, followed by Robinson, followed by Ying Li. And could I actually have Robinson and Ying Li please line up in the hall? In the aisle, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lou Cruz, and I, for one, I don't use Amazon. I'm a union worker. Anybody in this room or over there, don't use Amazon because I know that they don't care that I don't use it. Jeff Bezos is getting rich and rich and richer, but I refuse to use Amazon. I go to mom-and-pop stores, mom-and-pop restaurants. I go to independent people who are selling makeup, cosmetics, clothing. I always go to places like that. I refuse to go to Amazon. Okay, now that that's over, I want to let you know, you know, I disagree with Amazon coming here. When I looked them up, and I, I know there was a big thing of Amazon trying to become unionized in another state, and what did they do? They imitate, they intimidated the workers. They went against workers. Why? Because they don't want unions. Why don't they want unions? Because unions fight for your rights. Union fights for you to have a good pension, to have healthcare, to have holidays off. I mean, come on, people. Unions are fantastic. I don't always agree with my union, and people know that, but you know what? I'll fight for my union, and I'll fight for any union. I really will. And what, how do they treat their workers? You know, I was doing some research on it, plus some things that I heard about. One of the things I heard about is that they were urinating in bottles, and there was criticism about that. So Jeff Bezos, being such a gracious person, now tells them they can wear adult diapers. Love that. I love it. Adult diapers. Thank you, Jeff Bezos. You know, that's so ridiculous. There are people, there was a lady working, and it was in the news. She has a disability, and you know, people with disabilities are covered by the ADA. They are. And they were trying to, they would ask her because she had a visual impairment. Can you really not see? Can you really not see to put her in a place where she shouldn't be working?
Thank you.
And, okay, I, I had so much more, but I hope that you will say no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is R. Robinson, followed by Ying Li, followed by Gerloin Lopez Reyes. And could I please have you all line up in the aisle? Oh, yes. R. Robinson.
Good evening. Our West Covina neighborhood, once known as the city of beautiful homes and a bedroom community, will soon become blighted, a backwater Amazon ghetto, much like downtown LA. The negative deck before you tonight does not achieve CEQA compliance. The negative deck deficiencies include but are not limited to the following points. One, the proposed zone change is not compatible with the neighborhood. People have a right to a decent home in a neighborhood that is aesthetically pleasing. The project is not compatible with the city's general plan, both historic and present zoning plans. The community benefits agreement is not adequate when compared to the benefits enjoyed in similar communities in California that house Amazon warehouse facilities. Community meetings have not been held. Zoom meetings are not adequate for me. I don't have a computer at my home. We need a better community benefits agreement. The developer can easily afford to treat us better. West Covina's legislature, you, need to negotiate harder and better. Development agreement conditions won't be enforced in the contract. The contract language needs improvement. The project proponent can identify environmental effects by the use of a checklist, but the checklist is incorrectly filled out, and therefore, this initial study is not adequate. Traffic trip generation counts are underestimated, especially for the peak season estimates, Christmas shopping season. My own view is that this project have, are significantly different to the facts, than the facts before you tonight. The zoning of such a facility is not compatible with a residential bedroom community.
Thank you.
This is, this is the CEQA law.
Our next speaker is Ying Li.
The guy over there, with regard to Steve Bennett.
But we got your thing.
Bad legal advice.
Can we have the next speaker, please?
While he was standing right here. You need to follow the CEQA law.
Who's the next speaker?
Our next speaker is Ying Li, followed by Gerloin Lopez Reyes, followed by Barbara Winnington.
Good evening, council and mayor.
Okay, can I have everyone please be quiet? We'd like to hear the speaker.
Yeah, my name is Ying Li. So I, I've been living in West Covina, Covina for over seven years. So I'm a reduced voter. I'm basically 100% local. So, yeah, so I overheard, so the Amazon provided one traffic study. It said the traffic is no effect in local study. So, yeah, I just go through the traffic report. I find some issue. So, yeah, first of all, so this traffic report is provided by third-party company called NV5, which is located in the Georgina. But this is not a problem, but however, in, in today's presentation, it says Christmas Thanksgiving period season shouldn't be considered. According to our California traffic magic law, it said seasonal and weaker variation in traffic should be considered. So, second, second thing we find, so let's try to explain how they do their study. So they did the trip generation study. Basically, they claim there, there are no 24-hour delivery centers, a mathematical model. So what they did, they took, they take four other travel station, they did a seven-day measurement, then according to our station food square employee, then they build a mathematical estimate, this was the traffic to bring to our community for this delivery station. But the, the interesting part, so the traffic study about four facilities performed on November 5 to November 11. This is for three, first three stages. And the fourth stage is performed January 14 to January 20. So if you think about, so this two week is lower the shopping season amount of the year. The reason is very simple, because November 5 to November 11, just before, just because Black Friday, something gave a thing.
We got it. Thank you. The time's.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, so basically, this study result is not really present.
Time's up.
The delivery station, really traffic condition in our community. So.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gerloin Lopez Reyes, followed by Barbara Winnington, followed by Alice Lopez.
Good evening. My name is Grecia Lopez Reyes. I'm a community organizer, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the new Amazon facility. I just want to say with all due respect, despite what's listed in the staff report, this item is not in line. this item is not in line with your general plan's Prosperous Community Policy 2.8. The development of the project will provide terrible job opportunities for residents, and there is zero evidence that this will increase business to the surrounding area. Amazon, as many have said already, actually hurts small mom and pop businesses. And it also hurts workers. Lastly, I just want to highlight, several of us spoke to West Covina residents on our own free will. None of us were paid. We are here because we care. We are here because we want you all to do the right thing. We want you to listen to everybody that has spoken, that has talked about the impact that this has on communities and workers. And we really want you to reconsider and vote no on the item tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Whittington, followed by Alice Lopez, followed by Hugo Leal.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I have some questions that I think you need to ask yourselves before you vote on this that should slow this project down. First, what is the penalty for them not following the rules? Second, why is West Covina not worth more than $4 million over 10 years? Or is it 20? Not sure. Kind of got confused there with their little program. So I think it's 10, but then they said 20. So good luck with that one. Since they will not be bringing revenue, why are you not worth more than $4 million? Will there be another study on noise, pollution, and traffic after a year? And if it does affect like we expect it to be, what will be the penalty? And what will they have to do to fix it? Why do, why do they get to man their own complaint line? If it was me, and I own that business, and I own the complaint line, I wouldn't give you guys the right information. I'd give you what I think you need to know so that I can keep my business there. So they shouldn't get to do that. You guys should. And there should be checks and balances on there. Have you ever visited an Amazon facility and talked to the neighbors that are affected? If not, drive down Fifth Street in San Bernardino. Good luck. Do it during the rain and hope you have a truck, because if not, you're going in a puddle. Next, what are the guarantees that local community members will get the jobs first and not outside people? $15 an hour isn't going to make it anyway, but heck, they say you're going to get jobs here, so make them work for it and give you guys the jobs first. Why can't they pay more so that you don't have to work two to three jobs and live in West Covina? Have them sign a CBA with West Covina with penalties if they don't hold up their end of the bargain. They need you more than you need them. Ask them for more. You're worth it. And last, I know my UPS driver. I know who he is. I know their family. I know everything about them. The Amazon driver that comes to me is different every time, and you have to run just to give them a poor bottle of water because they don't have the time, because they only make $15 an hour. So please reconsider this and do the right thing for your community.
Our next speaker is Alice Lopez, followed by Hugo Leal, followed by Robert Arieta.
I wasn't going to speak today, but I'm listening to everybody. And I'm actually, my niece lives in West Covina. I do not, but I'm here to support her, to let her know that what was going on. And she's obviously not for it. I'm going to speak as a homeowner. Okay? I chose my house in a certain area because it's beautiful, it's quiet, it has trees. They're going to come in, and they're going to build a building there that shouldn't be there, an industrial building. They're going to put up a wall. So instead of seeing your trees, you're going to see a wall. Who wants to do that? That's not why you chose to live where you're supposed to be living at. That's why they're going to come in, I mean, they say jobs. Guess what? Everybody's hiring, and some with benefits. Trust me. I know. They're doing a lot just to put this one building there. Now, if they're going to go through that much, what are they truly offering? You have to understand that I feel like myself, if I was living next to an Amazon building, a UPS building, a FedEx building, I would not want to live there. You know? Jobs are great, but you know what? Everybody's hiring right now. Trust me, a lot of people out there are hiring. And it's better to go to a mom and pop. I actually agree with the lady that was saying that, because that's where the money needs to go, not to a corporation that's going to take all their jobs away. Trust me. They want everybody to work for them. They want you to buy their product, and they could care less if they're going to put someone who's working their life to have their own company to do. You don't need them here. You really don't. And as a homeowner, I wouldn't want them here. These people have chose to live in this beautiful area for a reason. Now, if you're going to put a building, an industrial building, with traffic and noise, because that exactly is what's going to happen. They can say this and that, but when they come in, trust me, they're going to do what they want. I just, you know, I'm just saying, vote no. And thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Hugo Leal, followed by Robert Arieta, followed by Janet Hurtado.
Good evening, Mayor, distinguished council members. My name is Hugo Leal. I've worked for UPS for 28 years, and I'm very proud of that. And I just want to go ahead and repeat everything that's been said here tonight. Working for UPS, you get paid well, great benefits. You have representation at work. When you get injured, it gets taken care of. And, you know, so we're asking a no vote, you know, to Amazon, not to allow them in our neighborhood. I think it's a bad decision. It's bad for everybody, and I think you should go ahead and protect your community here. I just want to share that, you know, at UPS, the benefits are great. I've been fighting cancer for the past three years, and under my benefits, the company has paid about $1.5 million in bills, and I'm still here. And after I was, you know, after I found out that I was in remission, I was eager to come back to work. If I worked for Amazon, hell, no. I wouldn't go back. And if you all have children, I don't think you would encourage them to go ahead and work for Amazon. And another thing, too, is, you know, about your community here. If you're going to have Amazon, you know, in our communities, what are you going to do in the mornings when they have to fuel their vehicles? What are you going to tell your residents when they can't gas up? Because you're going to have a bunch of vans, a bunch of trucks at those gas stations. Where are your residents going to go to fuel up? Next city over? It's unfair for the city of Covina to have Amazon in our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Arieta, followed by Janet Hurtado, followed by Estuardo Maza Ríos.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to ask you to vote against this agenda of this Amazon. I came here from work tonight, and I, I've been on my same route. I deliver in Pacific Palisades. And I'm on that same route for five years. I can't tell you how many Amazon drivers I've seen in the five years, and I'm still the same route driver there. Just today, on the street that I was delivering, I, at one point, there was five different Amazon vans on my same street. I've talked to these guys, and I said, why, you guys, you know, there's so many vans. I see 12, 13, 15 vans, and I'm the only UPS truck delivering these 15 streets. And they said, well, Amazon doesn't want to pay overtime. So the way they do that is, we're out here delivering at 10 o'clock, just like you, but we're not getting paid overtime. We start later. And the cost of that is just more vans, more fuel, right? More, more, more cars on the road, blocking driveways, doing whatever, you know? I've seen Amazon drivers with their doors open, going down the street. I actually seen one time where boxes fell out of their van. And so Amazon could do better. Right? Caruso, he built the village there. And I was at a meeting like this where the, the, they were complaining. They're, so you're going to ruin our, but at the end of the day, you talk to them today, and they say, well, he added value to our property. Right? They're selling their properties more than what they were because he built this village. The question I have is, when Amazon comes to town, what's the value? Right? Well, what's the value for, for, for those, the homeowners that live here? Right? Amazon can do better. They're, they're a big company with lots of money. My question is, if you vote yes, you know, what, what, what can they do to make you better instead of coming and making it worse?
Our next speaker is Janet Hurtado, followed by Estuardo Maza Ríos.
Hi, good evening. So my name is Janet. I live borderline of West Covina, Balden Park. So our community is still coming out of the situation we're currently going through with COVID. We are finally getting a piece of what might seem like, like good news. A global retailer is opening a distribution center that is providing a lifeline to our struggling area, creating jobs and contributing tax revenue. And we, we know we need both. I know people that currently work in the warehouses that say that these jobs are grueling and stressful, that few people are even able to stay in them long enough to enjoy the offered benefits, many of which don't become available until people have been with the company a year or more. Some of these jobs Amazon creates are seasonal or temporary. They don't know how many hours they'll work a week or what their schedule, schedule will be like. Yes, the company does pay more than the minimum wage and offers benefits and tuition, reimbursement, healthcare, and stock options. I have a question for everyone here. Is any job a good job? I say it's a step backwards.
Our next speaker is Estuardo Maza Ríos, followed by Jim Smith.
Good evening, council and mayor. How about those Dodgers, eh? Feel like Corey Bellinger out here. So, yeah, my name is Estuardo Maza Ríos, and I'm working with L.A. Los Angeles Alliance for New Economy. The reason we're here today is because we oppose the construction of a facility in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And I would like to ask everybody that's here in opposing the situation to please stand up.
It's actually, you have to address to the speaker.
Thank you very much, everybody. And this shows that this is true democracy. This shows that right here, we're trying to lift the shadow from, from what's happening right now.
Can I have everybody sit down and please?
Thank you very much, everybody, for standing up. We door knocked in the neighborhood over the last week. We've talked to over 200 residents in West Covina. We've signed over 200 petitions in West Covina. We've put up lawn signs in West Covina. We make sure that everybody knows what's going on in West Covina. And we will keep coming back if this does not get stopped today. This is just the start and the beginning. If we do not get this stopped and have more community input, we will keep coming back to West Covina stronger and stronger and stronger. And we'll make sure that our voices are heard in the long run. The community will not be denied our process. You will not let Amazon come into our neighborhoods like they have in 32 other communities throughout LA County. We will make sure that we stop them here. We'll make sure that they stop them anywhere that they say they want to take advantage of our bodies, of our lungs, our family, our land. This is our right. So listen to the 32 folks, the grandmas, the workers, not the developers that don't live in West Covina, the grandmas that raise their children in West Covina. So please, with your conscience today, say no to Amazon and stand with the folks that voted you in. Stand with the folks that say no to Amazon.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Smith.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jim Smith. I'm the political coordinator at Teamsters Local 396. Our union has a proud history fighting for rights of working men and women throughout North America for over 100 years. I began my career working in the warehouse and driving a package car for UPS. Now, in my role as political coordinator, I fight to protect rights of local 396 members throughout the region. I am proud that our members have a voice on the job and have been able to establish careers for themselves. Quality jobs are important because they help to create strong and stable communities. I'm here to express concern over the proposal to build an Amazon facility here in West Covina. OSHA data for 2020 shows that the serious injury rate at Amazon warehouses, meaning workers hurt, workers were hurt badly enough to miss work or be placed on light duty, was almost 80% higher than the entire warehousing industry at 5.9 serious injuries for every 100 Amazon workers. Amazon internal safety reports and weekly injury counts show that between 2016 and 2019, injury rates increased every year. The higher-than-average industry injury rates among workers at Amazon facilities are not restricted to warehouses. Injury rates associated with last-mile operations like the one proposed in West Covina are even higher. Do you really want Amazon's typical high rates of injury, high rates of turnover, and low pay coming to this community? The West Covina City Council could do more to support good, family-sustaining, middle-class jobs, but Amazon's proposed facility does not come close to accomplishing this goal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Vega.
Honorable Mayor, council members, chief, and rabble. There's no two ways to put it, but Amazon is an evil company. You can ask any small businesses that have been successful, and then all of a sudden, Amazon is competing against them. It happens. And shame on all y'all. Stop using Amazon. Go to eBay, go brick and mortars. There's retail workers that need the jobs. Amazon is an evil company. Their, their, part of their business plan is to monopolize the distribution chain, which is a direct challenge to all our union members here. And stop using FedEx. Those guys are evil, too. So I'm calling on you elected officials, need to be on the right side of history. No, wait a minute. This is the same city council that voted to build a hotel on a toxic waste dump. What am I talking about? We better, we better talk about this. But really, kidding aside, we got to tell Jeff Bezos that we will protect our good union jobs here in the San Gabriel Valley, that his modern-day sweatshop has the highest number of injuries, as everybody has mentioned. And I bet if they could, they probably would hire child labor to get the small stuff. Would you put it past their business? So not in our town. We must send this story to the moon. Thank you. So building, building this here, talk about releasing the Kraken. Come on, folks. Let's do the right thing, be on the right side of history. Oh, just in time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was our last speaker. However, I must note that 21 individuals expressed their opposition to the item via Agenda Item Position Slip and have chosen not to speak.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to thank all speakers for speaking this evening, and I shall now close the public testimony portion of the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up and speak and address any of the concerns.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. It's nice to see you tonight. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and talk about our project. And also, I'd like to thank Mrs. Morales, Paulina, and Jenna for their presentations, Jenna Robbins for their presentation as well on our project. Thank you for that. I'm from Green Law Partners. We are the developer. My name is Scott Murray. I'm a partner with Green Law Partners. We are purchasing the church's property from the church. We are not Amazon. We are a developer that's buying the property. Amazon is a tenant that would like to lease the property from us. So we're buying it from the church. Amazon has signed a lease. And the lease will allow us to recoup our investment into the church. The church is desiring to grow and to change what they're doing, and they're selling their property. And that's what brings us here today. I just want to make sure that that's really clear, because there, there's a lot of comments that we're addressing Amazon directly, and you should get more money from Amazon, and you should do this. We are a developer from Southern California. We've been in business nearly 20 years and have done development in a lot of the communities here in Southern California. Our goal is to make communities better by improving their buildings, improving the buildings that we buy. And you'll, you've seen that with our presentation tonight on how this building will change. It's an industrial building, and we are going to have it as an industrial use. That's what our request is. Today, it's being used as a church, but it used to be an industrial building. Thank you for, to all of the staff members and everyone at the city, really, that has helped us along this process. We appreciate all of the help. And, and frankly, we've been, we've been doing this for a couple of years now. And it wasn't the project. And it wasn't the project that we brought in initially of what it is tonight. It has changed a lot because of comments and technical studies and working with the city to make sure that we molded, molded the project around the city's requirements, both with technical studies and the building code. And so we've made changes to the project so it conforms, which is why you saw in the technical studies that were presented earlier that there were not impacts, you know, both with traffic and noise and pollution. We've done those studies and adjusted what we're doing at the project so that we wouldn't have those, those variances, so to speak, to talk about tonight. That's why the project doesn't have impacts. In rebuttal to a lot of the comments that were, were said today, this is a land use conversation. And tonight, it seems like we're caught in the crosshairs of a labor situation. And, and we're not Amazon. You know, we are not an employer. Amazon is the employer. And so I'm not here to defend what Amazon does or doesn't do, but clearly the UPS folks have an issue with what Amazon does and a lot of the union folks have an issue with that. And for some reason, they've all shown up tonight and it's a big deal for them. We're not in a labor union dispute. We're here as a land use proposal and, and looking for the project to get approved. I, I heard a number of people talk about, you know, the roads are going to be used and worn down and there's going to be all these trips and you should limit the trips and, and you know, one thing that wasn't ever studied in a technical study nor has been brought up is when an Amazon driver fills up their van, on average, they will drop off at 250 to 300 homes. What no one has said tonight is the people that ordered the package into their home do not have to get in their car, drive to the store, buy it and then drive back home. We've not talked about the trips that are taking off the roads because one van instead of 250 to 300 cars is delivering those packages. So I wanted to point that out when all this conversation about wearing down roads and driving more trips, the vans are actually much more efficient than 250 cars per van on average, 250 to 300 is what they deliver each day.
Please, order.
There was also another comment and multiple comments about Amazon's killing retail and killing the small businesses. And, you know, it's not a news flash to any of us. A lot of people in West Covina and everywhere are ordering from Amazon, which is why Amazon is here. There is no, hey, you approve the project or not approve and it's going to kill or not kill retail. People are ordering from Amazon. It's happening. And so the vans are coming to deliver because people in the city of West Covina are asking for it. And so this facility allows for a close local facility to be able to deliver to the people that want Amazon to deliver because they deliver quickly and they help people who can't get out of their homes or don't want to get out of their homes and need that service. Also, Amazon has 1.9, 1.9 million small businesses and medium sized businesses that put products on their website to sell. So there is small and medium sized businesses that actually create a business through their website and through their delivering. They care about the small and medium sized business. Also, earlier in the presentation, there was someone who spoke about confusion about the term of the lease and the development agreement and kind of threw her hands up in the air. It's a 12-year lease with Amazon. It starts in the middle of next year after the construction would be completed. Someone talked about we're building a new industrial building. We're not. It's an existing industrial building that we are modifying to improve it so that Amazon can come in and use the facility. It's not a new building being built. It's just improving what's already there. Lastly, you, as you know, and I want to say, I mean, hundreds of jobs are coming to West Covina, more jobs than what the church is offering today. And that is what happens with this project is jobs. There will now be property tax charged to this project, which wasn't there before because the church does, is nonprofit. So now there'll be an $80,000 and growing number of property taxes that will be paid each year. And, and also there is a $4 million community benefit fee that has been put together in the development agreement that the developer is interested in helping the community by offering that because it's in replacement of a church that's going away. And that those funds should be a benefit to the community for the project. And then finally, as a faith church, they're selling their project when they've made that decision. And this allows them to grow potentially within the city, potentially to be able to service their parishioners that come to their church in ways that are more important for them at this time. That's the end of my rebuttal comments. Thank you very much for considering our proposal to be able to come to your city and we appreciate it. And if there's further questions, we'd be happy to answer. And we've got, you know, the team of folks that have worked on the project here.
So I'm going to open it up to councils, questions and comments and discussions. So I have Councilman Tabasai.
Yes. First off, I, I'd like to say I'm a little disappointed in your comments because I, I was at both planning commission presentations and, and you seem to want to have it both ways. The five of us represent 110,000 residents in West Covina. And you, you cannot, on the one instance, have all the perks of Amazon and sell that to the community. And then when you get the critique of Amazon, come in here and say this is a land use issue and has nothing to do with Amazon. That's being very disingenuous.
Quiet, please.
So, so I, I just, I needed to, to, to say that because I, I really want us to have a really good, honest conversation. And, and I'm hopefully that you will be very transparent and that you, you won't try to, to hide under some type of language that, that you, you started us off with. And so I'll state that. The other thing I just needed to point out because it was repeated by a few people, but it was also said by Don Lamb during his presentation, just want to make this very clear. California minimum wage beginning January 1st, 2022 is $15 an hour. Okay? Any talk that these jobs are double minimum wage is ridiculous. And again, I am, I'm hoping that we can have a conversation.
Councilmember Tabasai?
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question. I'll, I'll, my first question will be this. In August, when I met, I did request a visit to one of these Amazon sites as a representative of District One, where this site is going to have a tremendous impact. And, and District One, Two and Three, the residents of those districts are being asked to sacrifice to have this center there. Why, why wasn't in the three months before today? Why, why was that not able to be set up? Why, why? I, I mean, as a representative of the district, all, all of my residents expected that I would have done a thorough job and I would have been able to visit the site, see what it's like, see what the, the vans and all of those things, right? Personally, right? So I could speak with some knowledge. So why, why wasn't that able to happen?
I don't know that I recall the general conversation of you coming. I do recall that late last week, there was a request to go see a facility. We're not Amazon. We don't control Amazon. We put the request in for you to come visit. They have policies and procedures and new COVID policies and procedures that they have to follow to allow someone to come in. I think they will allow you to come in, but there has to be enough time. There was only about a day or two to go in and they could not coordinate it.
Right. So, so when I, when I took my time as a representative of District One and the representative of citizens of West Covina, to take a day off of my work, to show up and meet with you for two hours and my one request, one request, I want to be able to visit the site and if we could have staff and the other council members to visit a site, okay? You and the other attorney and former mayor Miguel Polito said, we will make that happen. Well, it, it didn't happen. And you're, you're trying to bring, you, you want us to make a change, right? So it's your job to sell us on why this is good for our community. But it wasn't my job to continue to call, to go ahead and get an appointment to maybe visit a site. I mean, that, that's just common courtesy that you would take us on a site visit, especially when you knew this type of development was going to be extremely concerning to a lot of community members. So, you know, I believe.
Madam Mayor.
October 27. Yes.
What questions?
I believe, well, I guess my, my question again would be, why wasn't more due diligence done so, so we could get a thorough vetting of what these sites look like? I guess that would be my first question. I have more questions for later. I'll just ask that one.
First off, just to make it clear, I'm not an attorney, nor are the people that met with you are an attorney. That's, that's, that's not who we are. So that, that's, that's not the case. Two, you are the one, the only one that requested to go see it. And when we got their request in from when you were going to take time to be able to do it in your schedule, we requested it and we're not able to accommodate in the short order of time. I think we can, I think Amazon will accommodate. They've done that in the past. It takes a little bit more time to set it up and I think we could still do that if you'd like to come see.
Okay, well, maybe then that this would be, we could table this, but I'll, I'll save that for later.
Do you have additional questions? Okay, Councilman Wu.
Hey, um, okay, and thank you so much for showing up, okay? And to clarify, okay, who is the buyer, okay, of this property? Okay? And, and we want to make sure so the person come to West Covina has a fair chance, okay? And even opposition or no matter pro or come, okay? We want to know both side, okay? And we want to welcome, no matter who they are, okay? They come to West Covina and then want to buy a land and want to develop. So, but we have to go through this process. Okay? And council over here, we not try to, try to bashing you or we not try to do anything. We try to understand the project and we want to understand that this project is benefit to our city or not. Okay? So, so, and I never request to try to go to, okay, this is the site because I want to see the land use. Okay? Am I understanding, okay, this property was Amzonlin, right? Paulina?
Yes, at one point it was industrial.
This is Amzonlin because I understand in West Covina, we have a very rare location is a manufactured light, okay? Let's say it's a, somebody in the row and a little bit further north. It's only this area, okay? Including this church once upon a time and the next door, they all, okay, as a commercial, okay, manufactured zoning. We only have a this size manufactured zoning and the rest, okay, is a commercial C zoning and a lot of residential zoning. So, so this is only rare place. So once upon a time, this is Amzonlin and now it sold to the faith church. That's my understanding. And now you, Greenland, okay? Green Law?
Green Law Partners.
Okay? And you coming in and do you have any relationship with Amazon, your tenant?
We, the relationship that we have is that we're the landlord and they're the tenant.
So basically you just, okay, developer buying the land.
Correct.
And try to find, okay, a tenant, okay, can pay you so you can get your money back. And then after lease, don't know how long, okay, they will, if they don't, so how long is the lease?
It's a 12-year lease that starts upon the completion.
They have option to renew?
Excuse me?
Do they have an option to renew?
There are some options to renew in the lease.
So basically, am I understanding all the tenant, they will 10 years, five or under 10 years option or two 10 years option?
They have some five-year options, which they're not required to take. It's at their option if they'd like.
Got it. So, but they will lock with you for 12 years.
The, the, the base lease term that is agreed to is 12 years.
Got it. So, so basically, as a developer, you have to buy this land because the church is selling, okay? And then you make an offer, then you purchase and then you have to find a tenant. So you, the Amazon came to you, okay, say, hey, I'm interested because they have a lot of parking lot. Okay? So then so how this going, right?
That's correct.
So that's why you submit a plan to the city, okay? And want us to change your land use from Amzonlin to church, now from church back to the Amzonlin. And this is a process we are considerate, okay, today. Okay? And I'm sympathetic, okay, at the labor dispute, but we have nothing to do, okay? And, and right now, everybody has a hard time to find employee, everybody has a hard time to find employee, employee. So you have to pay more. Okay? So if the tenant coming in, if they cannot find any employee, then, then meaning what? Meaning they have to raise the bar, okay? And to find, okay, myself, I own company, I, I have to, okay, and raise my bar to, to, to hire employee right now because right now very difficult to, to do it. So, so, and in that way, excuse me? Excuse me?
He's asking about.
Excuse me, let me finish.
He's asking about five.
Be respectful, okay? We let you talk, we listen to you. Now it's my time to question him.
Go ahead, Councilman Wu.
You please? I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to somebody's, okay?
Go ahead, Councilman Wu.
Please respect each other. So anyway, okay, so, so basically what this is about, about you want us to, okay, land use. And regarding the Amazon and regarding how many jobs they want to create for us?
Jobs, approximately 400 jobs.
So 400 jobs. So do we have a requirement from planning request, okay? And that must be West Covina resident and Covina because Covina on the north side. Do we have that requirement from the planning when they approve? They don't have a requirement for the job?
It's specified in the development agreement.
But if can that we, if we are considerate about this project, can we request has must be West Covina, Covina resident? The reason we including Covina because somebody in the road, nothing but Covina. So we need to including them about this 400 job. So anyway, I, I will ear my times to go to all the council can ask question. Go ahead.
I had a quick question. How is this different than the one in City of Industry?
How is the delivery station different, the one in City of Industry? You know, if you don't mind, I think I'll actually let, we have a couple of representatives from Amazon here tonight. And perhaps we can let them answer that question.
Thank you.
Good.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. So the one, what the City of Industry, I believe it's a similar delivery station as the one that we're proposing. They all differ basically on size and basically based on population density of the size of the facility and what we're looking to service. So we have a variety of these type of uses, but for the most part, just to kind of provide just a brief overview, we have basically three types of warehouses in our fulfillment process. We have our, our fulfillment centers, which house our specific product and our box and those specific warehouses. And then we also have then our sortation centers, which is what we call our middle mile. This is where we break it down to a route level and basically either use a third party provider or use one of our delivery stations. And then what we're proposing here in, in the city of West Covina is our delivery station. These typically are about 100 square feet or so, variety, 100 to 300, 300,000 square feet, kind of taking a step back. The other ones, fulfillment centers, those are usually our 1 million to 3 million square foot facilities, typically in the inland empire.
So West Covina is considered delivery station and the City of Industry is considered a delivery station as well?
I, I don't have the exact address for the one in the City of Industry to, to properly answer that, that specific question. I just want to provide that overview to provide kind of generalities for you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilman Wu? I mean, sorry.
Thank you. So I did have a question. I'm glad Amazon's here. So the, the jobs that are being created, not, from what I understand, they're, they're not all Amazon jobs because all of the, the van drivers are delivery service partners, right? So they are not Amazon employees?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll hand that over to my colleague. He's with the economic development team.
Perfect.
So I, I deal primarily just with the land use aspect, so get the right folks for you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tabasai, can you complete the question? Thank you.
Yes. So from my understanding, the delivery service partners are not Amazon employees. Is that correct?
That's correct. The delivery service partners, those basically are an entrepreneurship opportunity for folks to start a small business, run that business. They, they hire the delivery van drivers under the, under their company.
So, so from what I understand, FedEx and UPS are both, they're both subject to federal safety inspections by the Department of Transportation. But from what I understand, the delivery service partners are not subject to Department of Transportation oversight. So who does oversee the, the safety qualifications of the, because they're going to be driving through West Covina? And so I'd like to know who's, who's overseeing those vehicles?
I, I'm not aware that our DSP providers are not overseeing.
No, they're, they're not because of the, the weight of the vans.
So I wouldn't be able to speak to that. However, what I can share is that our DSPs, we have a long we have a long list of requirements, a long list of standards that they have to uphold. And they're, we have a monitoring that occurs to make sure that they're in compliance with their requirements with Amazon.
Okay. So when one of the delivery service partners is involved in an accident, who's liable? Does Amazon have any liability, or is that the DSP, the delivery service partner?
I wouldn't be able to speak in detail on that example right there. What I can share is that our delivery service partners, they do form their own company. And so typically, liability would be held, you know, through those companies.
Okay. So just because, you know, when we vote to make the change to the land use, so we're not just approving land use for an Amazon business. We're also approving land use for these delivery service partner businesses as well. Is that correct? It's not simply just Amazon.
I'm not sure I understand the relevance of the question, council member.
So, well, because, you know, we're trying to change a land use ordinance, and again, we're asking ourselves, right, the company that we're bringing into West Covina, right, we are looking out for the best interest of the 110,000 residents here. And so it's been highlighted that it's Amazon. Amazon is coming. But from what I understand, the vans, the ones that are actually going to be interacting with our community are not actually Amazon. So I'm trying to get a better understanding of what business.
Quick question, city attorney. Is that a relevant question? Because I know when businesses come here, we don't discuss or vote on how they run their business model. But is that because I know a lot of businesses?
This is a land use, purely land use decision. And you're discussing the issue with the landlord and not about necessarily the tenant. What you're talking about with the delivery, you've had your traffic impact fee study, you've had your SEQA documents to review. That's what you're looking at.
So I guess, I guess the confusion.
With respect to liability, I'm assuming that these independent contractors are insured, just like you and I are insured, and that's the liability rest.
Right. I guess the confusion is because in terms of transparency, the whole presentation highlighted Amazon, and highlighted why this is in the best interest of the community of West Covina. So I'm being asked as a council member to change the land use from the church to M1. And the whole thing that's been promoted to the public, it's because this is Amazon. This is a state-of-the-art company. So in the interest of changing this ordinance, I need to know, well, what is the company that is actually going to be using the land?
Is that really relevant? Because I know currently, a lot of our residents, hold on. I know a lot of our residents order from Amazon. And right now, the vans are currently on our streets. So unless the residents, you know, stop ordering from them, they are here right now.
Well, I also, I also understand, Madam Mayor, that when those vans return to their hub, currently, they're returning to City of Industry empty, they're returning to Rosemeade empty. But now.
Point of the order, okay. Councilman Tabai Tabai, do you have a question or you have a statement?
Yes.
Okay, I do, I do have another question.
Go ahead, go ahead. I want to listen.
It's just similar to Uber and Lyft and.
Thank you, Councilman Wu, for giving me the floor. So the $4 million that Amazon as a city benefits, so because this is a land use question that we're voting on, according to staff, this location, conservatively, we could put 360 housing units. That would bring in, again, conservatively, $325,000 a year in property tax, plus half a million dollars towards our first-time homeowners program. So conservatively, we're talking about $7 million in just the property tax. This doesn't include the multiplier effect of when you bring in residential, about the shopping and all of those things. So I guess my question is, why, why is the community benefit, the $4 million, such a low number when we consider what we could get from housing?
Yeah, it's an interesting argument when you compare top-line numbers. If you just compare revenue, it seems like, oh, residential would be more revenue. What you're missing from your argument is the cost part of the model here. Costs like police, fire, medical, the things that happen when you have a residential housing community in an area. Those things cost, so although you may have more property taxes as you reference, there's additional costs that come out of that. So the bottom line isn't quite so stark.
Okay, so I guess, because we're talking about.
Can I have it quiet, please? I don't want to have to repeat myself. And if I do, we're going to clear the chambers. Thank you.
Okay. So.
Really?
I had a.
Head, Councilman Tabai Tabai.
An infrastructure concern, because you brought up cost. So the tenant, Amazon, is currently working on going fully electric. So before the tenure is done, they'll have over 100,000 electric vehicles from Rivian. And so one of my concerns is, part of the sell is that Amazon is going to be purchasing gas within the city. The gas tax will cover the infrastructure. So is there anything in the agreement that will make up for the loss of gas tax revenue when Amazon goes full electric? So because I understand the benefits of 200,000 straight a year, but that's not going to cover infrastructure costs if Amazon's not paying the tax. So if you, is there any consideration for that, that your tenant is soon to not be paying the gas tax?
Umberto, would you like to address the timing of electrical, electric vehicles? I don't know that. Umberto Quintana from Amazon, I didn't introduce him earlier.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So just to provide a bit of context, this was provided in the planning commission presentation. But we do have a couple of incentives in terms of, as it relates to sustainability. And let me just get to that specific page. Bear with me. So as you mentioned, we did purchase 100,000 vans from Rivian. These are actually being deployed nationwide, though. So it is going to take some time to deploy within the specific jurisdictions such as the City of West Covina. There is a desire to do that. But we're looking at basically 100% renewable energy within those facilities itself by 2025, net zero by 2030. So there is still some time for us to get to ramp up to be 100% electric at this facility. I wouldn't be able to provide you with the date, just given that it does take time to produce these things. But there are several multipliers as well, from an economic standpoint, in addition to the gas that's, you know, being purchased and things of that nature, just the additional employees and kind of those specific aspects within that. But I don't have a specific hard date as to when that will go away. But we still have some lifespan in the project.
Right. So my question is, what, in this agreement, where, where are we going to be, where are we going to get the revenue in order to pay for the infrastructure costs to the streets once Amazon is no longer paying the gas tax?
And sorry, just sorry for the musical chairs. I'll defer to us on this one.
Okay, a couple of things. Number one, as I said earlier, one van, 250 to 300 residential deliveries a day in the City of West Covina, okay? That's how many people are not on the roads. So when we talk about roads being worn down, when they get one van showing up to a neighborhood and it delivers to a bunch of people there, they're not on the road. So it's tough to make the argument that the infrastructure gets worn down by one van versus 250 cars. So that's, there's a little bit of math.
Yeah, so.
That's one. Two, let me answer your other question.
No, no, let me ask the question first.
Okay.
Yes, and currently, that is the situation. And the mayor did mention, we have the center in the City of Industry, and we also have the center in Rosemeade. And so we are now adding, though, more vans to our streets when they have to return empty. So if we weren't to change this land use, we would still have the delivery vans, but we wouldn't have the addition of when the vans return. So by adding the center to West Covina, we're creating more traffic that currently doesn't exist. Like, I understand, people are still going to order from Amazon, right? I love bacon. I don't want to put a Farmer John Slaughter house there, right? I mean, that's, that's, right? So you understand that, right? People will order from Amazon. City of Industry made their decision to put a development center there. Rosemeade decided, Chino Hills decided. You know what? That's what their councils decided. Here in West Covina, why do I want to add the vans, the trucks? Right now, we don't, we don't have the trucks that come that are going to exit the 10 freeway on Azusa through District 3, right? Right now, I don't have the vans that are going to be using the Arco on Azusa and Workman, the 76 on Azusa and Workman, the Mobile on Azusa and East Carvey, the Shaw on Azusa and East Carvey, the Arco on Sunset and Bedillo.
Okay, we get it. Please.
So I guess, what's the benefit of Amazon?
On one hand, you're saying, what if they go all-electric and they don't pay us for the gas? And then on the other hand, you said, what if they go to all our gas stations and clog it up? So.
Because I need to worry about, yeah, because I need to worry about how are we going to pay for the road infrastructure, right? So it's complicated, right? It's not just black and white, right? Yeah, there's some conflict here.
But keep in mind, too, when and if they're able to go 100% solar, or 100% electrical vehicles, they still have to charge these vehicles. So they still have to have electricity to charge the vehicles, which your cities typically have a user tax there for electricity. And there's taxes that come to the city from people using electricity. I know that in the neighboring city Covina, it's 6%. I don't know off the top of my head what it is at West Covina, but there is a tax, just like on top of gas, for electricity usage as well.
Any 53-foot trucks coming in?
What was that?
Those big trucks, the 53-foot type of trucks.
Okay, what about them? What was the question?
Are they, are they coming in? Or if so, how many?
Yeah, so there's 14 that come in, in a 24-hour period. And 10 of them come in from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So they're coming in at night to drop off and to leave, and to circulate out. So you have about four during the daytime hours and about 10 during the nighttime hours.
Thank you.
So basically, it's nighttime truck coming in to drop all the package, and the next day, after 10 o'clock, and your van will starting deliver to all the home.
Yeah, that's correct. So it's, the evening time is when trucks come in to drop off the packages that then get sorted into roads, zip codes areas that they're going to deliver to. And then they get packed into the vans in the morning, and then the vans aren't released until after the peak hours.
Because my office, okay, we ordered Amazon, okay, to get, deliver to the office. So normally, I don't think I will receive any package after 6:00. So why is the period of time later they deliver to people's home?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I think this is maybe Amazon question. I just don't, yeah, maybe, okay, what is the operation time, okay? And, okay, by my understanding, some FedEx, they go to the 9:00, but Amazon barely, we never receive anything after 6:00. So maybe you can.
Sure. So our typical hours of operations, as indicated, we dispatch our vans around 10:00 AM. And that's, that's key to kind of address some of the concerns.
And coming out to deliver?
Basically, coming out around 10:00 AM. And that's basically to address concerns of safety, you know, folks going to school.
So why is the latest?
So they usually go out for a 10-hour shift, so usually return back around those, after a 10-hour shift of that, so.
So they still deliver at 7, 8 now?
Usually, there are.
Never receive anything?
It fluctuates. It all depends on where your location is in the route and wherever the algorithm is kind of identifying your specific location as they return back.
Okay, so basically, you have 7:00, 8:00 deliver?
We do.
Oh, so for that, okay, same deliver like daytime. So no difference. But the trucks only coming in after hours, like.
So for the most part, as indicated, it is 14 trucks throughout a 24-hour period. But we do have it basically staggered, so we don't have a congestion of those trucks. And we try to have those specific trucks, as indicated, 10 of those trucks usually drain the late-time hours to avoid any daytime.
So the truck delivers basically on the left-hand side, okay, and the day you get built what awards, so the truck can come in, would become some kind of, some barrier for the neighborhood, okay? I listened to planning.
Yeah, so if I'm going to say it correctly, there are specific improvements to the sites to address concerns of noise. There are sound barriers associated with that. But to kind of give you a little bit more background, so the way that the trucks are coming in is also to meet the demand, or rather, the shift cycle that we have. So basically, we have our employees coming in in the later hours of the night. So there needs to be product for them to basically sort and pick for the route that's coming in the morning.
Yeah, I saw it's basically all on the left-hand side, because the next door is a M zoning too, okay, and the manufacturer. So in that way, they're right there. So basically, trucks coming in, okay, and going out. So you only have a truck, okay, entry, right, and exit, same place right there.
Correct. That's the specific area into the truck court where our line-haul trucks will be.
Yeah, I saw you have three on the top and four down below. On Bedillo, you have a four, okay, yeah, correct, the green one. So the four is for what? Is for the van, for the?
So it's the other points of entrance, egress and ingress, is basically for van drivers and for the vans themselves.
Is coming in or going out?
It's, I think it's staggered. I would actually defer to your traffic engineer to take, I believe they have that specific information.
So.
So the vans and the flex drivers would come from the four entrances off Bedillo, and they would follow that green route. They would come in, let me see if I can.
So the green one only for coming in?
And then they would go in through, get loaded, and then they would come up out onto Bedillo.
So basically, in from.
I'm sorry, onto San Bernardino.
In from Bedillo and out from San Bernardino.
Correct.
So basically, San Bernardino is for the truck after hours, okay, and the green one on the top is out.
That's where they exit to do the deliveries.
And then down below, the four, okay, and the entry, they're basically in only.
Correct. So from Bedillo is when the employees are entering to get their vans, and then when they enter at the end of the day before 10:00 PM to park their vans at night.
Okay, how big the last size is? I know, I went to faith church numerous times. It's huge, okay?
A little bit over 21 acres.
21 acres, okay. I remember it's 21 or 22, 21?
21. 21.22 acres.
Oh, 21.22 acre. So that is a pretty big, and I remember they have a council parking lot down below. So they are not going to do anything on the structure. So they're basically, okay, and, okay, just remodel, you guys just want to remodel the existing? I know, it's before it's a warehouse, okay, so now you're going to, and then become auditorium, okay, for the church?
It's an intensive reuse project. So, yeah, we're looking, well, the landlord's looking to redevelop the site or remodel, do a tenant improvement.
For your, for your use? Become a assembly to package coming in, truck loading dock?
So there, that's correct. So there's going to be a loading dock.
You must have a loading dock.
But I could defer to.
How many loading dock, how many loading dock you have? You're going to put?
I'll defer to the applicant on the specifics of the site. But it looks like it's eight, eight loading dock.
Eight loading dock, and so your truck coming in, you go into loading dock, and they put the container and move the package inside the warehouse, and on the left-hand side?
Yeah, so the package is typically in those line-haul trucks already, what we call them go-karts, basically, bakers racks. And they go into the line, they get distributed down to the route level, and then ready basically for the next shift, the next day.
Okay, got it. So, go ahead.
Tim, go ahead.
Councilman Wu. Just wanted to add in, yes, so eight loading docks. One of them's for recycling. So you've got, you have recycling that gets put in a trailer. Seven docks that are there. Now, what's important about these seven docks to point out here is that when these 10 trucks come in at night, for example, you know, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, as in that earlier slide, they're coming in, dropping off and leaving. They're not sitting there waiting for another truck. They're not sitting there idling on the street. They're not stacking up. They're not going down the road. It's in, drop off, and out, because there's plenty to handle the evening time demand of 10 trucks total from, for 12 hours. So you're never going to get stacked up. You do have one recycling truck that's sitting there that they throw boxes.
So the next question would be, since you have a truck coming in, 10 truck coming in, do you have some barriers? So make sure the some pollution won't go to the south-side residential or next door, the, okay, Lock Island Village. So you have some barrier. I remember you built kind of over there 12 feet, so block the truck.
Oh, yeah. We've talked about a 12-foot wall. Oh, yeah, in the, in the, we've talked about a 12-foot wall along the Lark Allen property, is that what?
No, I'm talking about your building. When the truck coming in, I remember you built a 12-foot.
Oh, yes, the sound wall that's in.
That's what I'm asking.
That's correct.
You tried to reduce the noise, right? So, so that's closer to the building? Basically, it's what truck coming in and let, let some barriers, 12-foot? Based on the development?
I have a.
Let me finish.
If, if, Councilmember Wu? Sorry, Joanne showing where the 12-foot wall is going.
Okay, got it. That's why I remember I, I watched the planning on the, on the YouTube, okay? Let, let something block the, because your truck coming in, okay? And the people worry about they are sleeping, and then you truck coming in, okay? Will they create the pollution, okay? And some pollution? So, so because you adjacent to the Bedillo, South Side Bedillo, nothing but residential, okay? So, so if you kind of at the distance and you put a some blocker? So how, it's a 12 feet, right?
Yes, that's a 12-foot wall on that side. There's also the 12-foot wall on the eastern side of the property that's next to Lark Allen, which was in the conditions. So there's two.
But that one is kind of far away from the truck?
Correct.
And that one nighttime, you don't have car parking over there?
That's correct.
So there's no movement, nothing, no? Because over there, the truck is coming in with a movement?
Yeah.
You have, you have coming in, move the container, you move the package?
Here, Pearl Tim had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Yanoz, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. How, first one is, how did Amazon select this site? Do you have data on how many orders are placed from West Covina residents and businesses and surrounding cities?
Yeah, let's, so, so generally, their delivery patterns dictate where they want to create new sites? Find new sites? So as an Amazon landlord or a developer where we've signed leases with them, that's what we're answering, is the demand. So there's already packages being, you know, ordered within this area. And they look at their delivery network and say, if there's one right there, it is closer to the ordering. So generally, that's the answer. And of course, this is real-time information that they have, constantly coming in of what's being ordered. And so through the period of two years that we've been working on this project, that has not decreased to the, to the amount where they'd say, hey, let's don't do this anymore. It's either stayed constant or increased enough where they say, hey, we see that this will be a need long into the future, which is why it's a 12-year lease.
Thank you for that. And this next question is for staff, for Joanne, about the 12-foot wall reference on the eastern property line. Do we have, what's the tallest wall that's built in the city? Do we have, do you have that information?
In, in the past, for instance, the Queen of the Valley site, it was adjacent next to resident, an apartment complex. The city required an eight-foot wall on that site.
That's what I remembered. So eight feet's the tallest we've got?
Yes.
So for the hospitals, all the areas where it has a lot of noise, you know, the paramedics and all that, are those all eight feet max?
Yes.
I think some is, some is a six feet. I went there to check, some is a six foot. On the Hendrick, on the Hendrick Hospital, the 24 hours?
Councilmember Wu is referring to Kindred.
Hendrick, Hendrick Hospital.
The Kindred Hospital, yes.
It's six foot.
It's between six feet and eight feet. There is some portions that are six feet, and there's some portions that are eight feet in, in Kindred.
And, and there's 24 hours, okay, operation, right?
That's correct.
And they way next to the, okay, the village?
That's correct, it's adjacent.
You can see the map, it's very close by. It's quite all right, okay, but you can, you can show, okay? So because they chase, they're kind of surrounded by the Kindred Hospital. So what's the purpose of 12-foot? What's, what between the eight and 12? Because city, we don't have the height of wall, okay? And according, it's, I think, eight foot, right?
This is, you know, back to my earlier comments, we've done our best to.
Accommodate.
Accommodate concerns that, that came up.
If the Kindred, okay, Hospital over there is like, say, six or eight? And then you have, okay, and the city, then we might be allow everybody to put 12-foot?
Understood.
And that would be an issue? Because right now, I think we only allow eight foot, right?
Yeah.
Six foot for residential, commercial for eight foot?
12-foot height.
Yeah, we, we just don't want to do something, doesn't look good, okay? Or you still do vegetation, right? You do tree?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, we could, we could make, are you saying that the height could be 12 feet if it's vegetation above the actual wall? Is that what you're suggesting?
If you put, okay, Italian cypress, it could go to 30 feet, and it's green and look nice. It can become a, a block.
We would, we would be open to that. As the developer and as Amazon, our goal here is to fit within the community and do something that works for, for everybody, which is why we agreed to do that. It's very expensive to build a 12-foot wall, and we agreed to do that because we thought Lark Allen was a very important part of this project there, the neighbor. So if it can be answered with perhaps an eight-foot wall and some landscape above that, you know, that can help offset, we're, we're open to that. But, but certainly, we're sensitive to Lark Allen's needs and wanna make sure the residents there can have quite enjoyment.
I'd like to suggest that, an eight-foot wall and like, maybe some Italian cypresses or some other kind of tree.
Some green, some trees, so make it nice?
I just wanna see, is there a rendering that we can see in regards? Because I know some of the concerns that they brought up is the aesthetics. Is there?
No, we can, we can.
No, this, this was, yeah, it was put together weeks ago. Or the, the conversation with Lark Allen was just this last week, so.
Oh, Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, my question is for Joanne.
Can I have it quiet, please?
What I noticed is that the majority of the people that I've spoken are very concerned about traffic, environment, and noise. And the biggest problem I can hear from the audience is the traffic. And so I guess my question is, what's the traffic count on this location, Joanne?
914.
Okay.
914.
Okay.
914, Joanne.
914. Okay. And there's how many driveways there or exits? Like seven? Okay. Talking about traffic, I wanna know if we have a count on traffic on drive-through restaurants? We have a traffic count on that?
Joanne, Joanne, can you get closer? I could barely hear you.
Can, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. The last drive-through restaurant that was approved by the city is the Chick-fil-A, and that's located along the 10 freeway. And the, the traffic count there was 1,222, I believe, per day.
Per day?
Yes.
And that's 24/7, probably even more so during the fall. There after Thanksgiving, Christmas as well. I'm just wondering, what about Raros? What about In-N-Out? I noticed that there's a lot of traffic obstruction from these drive-through restaurants. And we have 914 right now with Amazon that people are complaining about. I didn't hear any complaints about these other restaurants. I just, just wanted to find out what the count was. Do we have it for In-N-Out?
We do not have it for In-N-Out. In-N-Out has been in the city for quite some time. And we, we don't have it, we do not have a, a updated traffic count for that. Because it was, it's not required to be counted by the city regularly.
What about the drive-through? How many entrances are there for Chick-fil-A and exits? Do we have that?
Joanne, I can, let me answer that?
Sure.
Okay, for Chick-fil-A, the entrance will be the off-ramp? You know, right across from the off-ramp? Just one. So they share that whole center with the fitness center, Marie Callender's, El Torito, that's further down. So there's different driveways, but the main one would be right opposite the freeway ramp. Any other questions? I think that's okay.
I want to follow up what you, you're asking. So you bring up very good question. Okay, and then so if our, the new In-N-Out development coming in, that will be the old Hutter Restaurant, right? And that, that is the, how, what's the last side over there? And we have one entry? And the, you're talking about the traffic count would be 1,220? Where there would be ooze out on the street, okay? And if they focus, concentrate on the lunchtime and the dinnertime? So what I'm saying, okay, I think I understand, Councilwoman Diaz, about the comparison about, how many, how many drive-through we have in West Covina?
More than 20.
More than 20 in the city? And each one regularly, their last size is how big? Okay, it's about 10,000, 20,000?
Approximately.
About, about that? Because we have another Chick-fil-A at, okay, Vincent.
Vincent, that's the one that I'm talking about.
Yeah, that one is, okay, a lot of traffic. So, so today, do we request a traffic count from those restaurant?
We do not, we have not required them to submit a, a, a regular traffic count.
I, I want to finalize, okay? Do, do, when you're talking about this 914 is for all seven, okay, In-N-Out?
Yes.
The entire property is set 914 for, for whole day?
Yes.
Okay, you have a question?
Another thing is, the, the ones that are sitting right there at the Chick-fil-A, they're idled there for quite some time. And I mean, I think that these vans are gonna be moving, and these trucks are gonna be moving.
Yeah, they're, Amazon has captains in the parking lot. They release vans when it's time to go. And so they have a very organized approach to it. They have someone out there moving, different from a drive-through where you've got no one out there, just a line to, to get food. But they've got people that let them go. And if, you know, traffic's bad or whatever, they can hold off or not start their vans yet. And they do it all in concert at the same time.
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple of traffic questions. But if you ever visit the West Covina residence pages, you hear a lot of complaints about that Chick-fil-A traffic. So I would, wanted to ask, now, now, we have the, the traffic study for around the site. But, but do we have the route for when, when the vans return into the city of West Covina to get there, right? Are they gonna be, right, driving through Amar and Azusa? Is it gonna be a long line of cars through Azusa? You know, coming through, through Vincent? I know that Vincent area has been a big problem for us. So, cuz I know it's very limited, our view of, of the traffic. We're just talking about around the facility. But all of these vans are gonna be returning at the end of a shift. And from what I understand, the, the delivery service partners are, are really pushed in terms of their, their time. So can, can you give me some information on, on that? Is there a consistent route of return?
Well, I believe, just from listening to Amazon, that it's based on who orders what. So for part of the traffic study, though, they included nine intersections that were surrounding the site. So these were all the major intersections. They did study that during peak hours and then the peak of the generator.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my concern is the, the entries into the city, right? So again, representing District 1, right, is, is your, you're coming up Sunset, right? So as, as these delivery vans are leaving, let's say, Hacienda, maybe they make their last delivery in Hacienda Heights. Or they're, they're coming from south, maybe Whittier, and then they're coming through, right? So that, that's gonna be an impediment on, on traffic as well, which I'm, I'm guessing we don't have the, any kind of data to, to look at in terms of, of those, right? Coming from Baldwin Park, re-entering West Covina? Coming from, you know, east of us, whatever those cities are, I don't.
Well, I believe, yeah, yeah, I believe, I mean, Amazon could answer this more. I'm just, by what I'm listening to and hearing from the traffic study, is that it's all a lo, more localized, so West Covina, Covina, Baldwin Park. But they did look at those intersections, all on the outskirts of the project site.
Yeah, Janet, was it?
Project site, but not, not necessarily in, okay, go ahead.
To actually follow up, I actually have a, a question to follow up. Councilman Tabata, are the returning of the vans staggered the same way as they are released?
Yeah, so that's basically how they're, as they dispatch out, and they're dispatched basically every 20 to 30 minutes in intervals, those set of 36 vans, it's kind of logic dictates they go out first. First way to go out is the first way to come back. And they start coming back in in that same staggered fashion. And then to answer your, your question, Councilmember Tabata, so basically, the intersections that were addressed, as part of the intersections were, you know, basically the ones of the peripheries. And I could let the, the traffic, you're basically address those. But those basically are both, in terms of origins, destinations, kind of going out and then coming back in as well. So, you know, the vans basically have their specific route. They'll usually return within that same area. And as they come in different peripheries, that's how they return back into those. And just really quick, as we were talking about being hyper-local, you know, we are looking at other expansions in, in Irwindale. So that's relatively close by, just, you know, Baldwin Park's just right in between. So looking at that hyper-local.
This is a, this is a last mile, right? This is a last mile service? So you are servicing to the very close in our neighborhood, right? You're not going to the Whittier, you're not going to far, far away place? Where's your service area?
On average, it's a, you know, based on population density, obviously, the areas that are much more rural, you know, it's gonna be a broader swath of, you know, miles and what have you. But here, on average, we look at usually like a seven to 10-mile radius of the.
So like Baldwin Park, La Puente?
West Covina, Covina?
Covina, Covina above it, okay.
Yeah, like I said, we're looking at sites potentially in, in El Monte, looking at a site in Irwindale as well. So that kind of reduces that consensus.
So we're not so special, looking at sites everywhere. So I, I, I did have a, a, a question, going back to, to something you said there. I think I lost my train of thought there. Going back to the, oh, yes, the, the delivery service partners. If, if I'm correct, the, the drivers don't have a consistent route daily? Is that, is that correct? From everything I've studied, that, that their route can change on a day-to-day basis? Is that true?
That's correct. We try to maintain the same type of delivery service provider for a certain area, but the drivers could.
The drivers are different, okay.
Yeah, I want to add on. Well, I don't think you go to El Monte. El Monte has a big, okay, and Amazon delivered center right close by to my office.
Roseme here.
No, it's El Monte and Roseme. Oh, come, one side is El Monte, one side is Roseme. And that's on the Temple City Boulevard. That's a pretty big, that's all lumberyard. And now you see nothing but, okay, a lot of your van, okay? And the cross street with all those warehouses, that is your, okay? So I don't think you go to El Monte. You already have one right there. So possible you will deliver over here because the possible West Covina deliver, okay, order a lot of Amazon. That's why you have to come. So people order, they want to get, okay, the merchandise, maybe a couple hours. So, so, so that's what people want, okay? So that's why you come to our city, deliver what people request. Okay, I'm done.
Do you have the numbers of how many orders are generated in West Covina?
I don't have that all. But to, to kind of just answer in generalities, the reason we did pick West Covina because there is a, a demand from the residents of West Covina as well as residents within the.
Got it, okay. I have a question for the, the buyer, okay, and the green land, okay, Greenlaw, okay? Okay, regarding, okay, compensation to the city? Okay, so, so, okay, based on the, okay, the, okay, development agreement with city? Okay, you're talking about the city requests 20 years, your lease is 12 years? And you say, okay, the first $2 million? Okay, first, okay, Amazon have to create 400 jobs for us? Okay, request West Covina, Covina resident? to create four hundred job for us, okay, request West Covina, Covina resident, okay, that would be a must, okay? And then four million dollars, two million dollars upfront, and another, okay, not more than two million dollars, because we're based on, what's your lease? Twelve years, right?
Twelve-year lease, and it starts when construction completes, which is about a year from now, a little bit, but almost a year from now, like towards.
So twelve, twelve-year lease, so the city should request that during the duration of the lease, we should receive that two hundred thousand dollars, okay, and for the city general fund. And another two million dollar, I think, uh, somebody request, you mentioned about community service, community enhancement.
Community benefit, um, two million upfront is, is what's in the agreement.
So, so, so basically, two million dollars, okay, upfront for the community because faith church issue, okay, we, then we can use this money to help people?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking for it to be a, a community benefit, and.
And this is from you, Greenlaw, not from Amazon.
From us, Greenlaw, not Amazon, correct.
That's you willing to, as a landowner, as a landlord, okay, if you have this development, you willing to compensate city with, uh, due to the church, so the two million dollar will be the, okay, and, uh, community enhancement, okay, fund, it's not go to general fund. So this money will go to the, okay, like charity thing, like, uh.
Right, we're replacing a church, and, uh, and the church has community benefits as a church, and we're offering this payment in replacement of that.
You want to say something?
Yeah, actually, I do, or maybe staff can answer, or if you've, because obviously you've been talking to faith church, do you know what contributions total that the faith church gives out? I know that they have the turkey drive, they have a lot of things that they assist the residents, and that is a big factor of them leaving. Um, obviously, community is important to me, so do you know what they've contributed prior, any?
Generally know what, some of the things that they do, but we don't know the financial contribution that they offer. Um, but know that they, you know, they have a school, they help, you know, those that, that are homeless, those that are not well-fed, others that are underprivileged. And so we, we know as a benefit, the church is a benefit to their congregation and to the community.
So this contribution would just go directly in replacement of the community? Um, it goes back to the community, correct? And I don't want, if it does, I don't want to see it go to general fund.
We can request a city contract.
Yeah, that is correct, and, and as a developer, uh, we really appreciate that, the opportunity to put it back into the community to help those that need it. Uh, that makes us feel very good about the contribution.
So basically, this two million dollar from city manager, so this two million dollars not go to general fund, it's go to the community enhancement fund, based on what the, uh, okay, mayor's request, okay, and, uh, okay, that would be help out possible, okay, uh, the family with children, possible rent assistance if they could.
Absolutely.
Potentially get.
We would be open to all those things.
No one children would be on the street, so we can kind of use this money to help out, and after-school program, okay, senior, some new program thing, so we can utilize, because if your money go to a general fund, you went to the, you go to Twilight Zone. So if we go to identify this money, we want to make sure this money going to directly to the resident in the neighborhood need help.
We agree.
Because I know, we, we went to the faith church, sometimes every year, they have a turkey, turkey run to make sure fee a family, okay? Uh, I think last year they have about six hundred fifty or seven hundred turkey packaged, okay, and they have donated.
Turkey dinners for.
We have a car, everybody donate field, and this sense of community, we want to help people in need. So if the church will be replaced, we need something possible, we can use this money to help out, continue to carry on. But, uh, I, I, I think the two million dollar possible not enough, so, so I will request maybe additional hundred thousand dollars, communities, okay, enhancement fund toward to the duration of the lease. And the two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, okay, that you agree with the, okay, on the contract, that two hundred thousand dollars should be based on the lease, okay, not based on ten years, should be duration of lease. And if after twelve years, if you still want, they want to renew, then we want to continue to get some of compensation during the lease. Is that kind of, can you consider it, whether be a deal killing or?
Certainly could consider that, um, at the end of the lease.
Are going to break the deals, okay?
Yeah, no, look, Ed, we gotta consider that with my partners, we've gotta talk about that. This is a lot of money to, to put in for this project. Happy that it's going to those in need, that's important to us. But at, at the end of the initial term of the lease, we don't know what's going to happen.
I wish they want to subject to the.
Sorry, you can't commit to that today.
The city, city continue to receive some compensation, okay, and, uh, the duration of the lease. So maybe five years, maybe three years, we don't know after twelve years, but the first twelve years, uh, the title, the city entitled to receive the two hundred thousand dollars for, that would go to general fund, possible fixing the pothole, this and that.
Right.
No matter what, okay, the, your vans already in our city, all the places.
Right.
Okay, why not get some compensation? You want to say something?
Uh, are you, are you done, Councilman?
I'm done.
Go ahead. Uh, two questions about the, the actual facility, and, and maybe I missed it. Um, the, the maintenance of the vans, um, where, where is that gonna take place?
So typically, the maintenance of the vans, we usually partner with a local dealership and do that type of maintenance with them. I know their facilities, if they, depending on the land use restrictions, allow for mobile solutions, and we could do that there, but it's open to kind of, uh, whatever the, the city desire could be.
Okay, and, 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 and so who, who, who make, is, is that Amazon that is going to, um, maintain the vans, or is it the delivery service partner that, that takes care of the maintenance of the vans?
So my, my understanding is the, the delivery service partners, it is a leased vehicle, uh, but it, you know, it all depends on the limitations. We do have, offer mobile solutions that do come to the site. Some jurisdictions do limit those type of activities. In those instances, we do then contract out with a local dealership or a local auto repair.
Okay, but that, that, that would be the, the delivery service partner that would, okay. Uh, and then, um, in terms of the, the, the site, um, and, and, and I, the, the, the pee bottle situation, right? Is, is there, is there an area for the, the hazardous waste dispose? I, I, I spoke to several gas station owners in Rosemead, uh, and that's become an issue with, with the drivers dumping the bottles in, in, when they're fueling up. And so does the facility have the ability, and it's, it's, I guess it's part of the, the delivery service partner just, you know, the way the work is? So is, is there somewhere on site that will be for hazardous waste disposal for, for the urine bottles?
Well, to, to answer, kind of just take the, the step back, so my understanding is that we typically partner with the local gas stations and allow for our delivery service providers and their drivers to utilize those facilities. I'm not familiar with the specific processes that you're referring to.
So, so when the, the vans are returned and, and, and the, the urine bottles that, that haven't been disposed of, is, is, is there a, a safe space on site to dispose of the hazardous waste? That's, that's my question. That, that's part of the, what, what occurs with this business, I'm just.
It seems, uh, in, in, you know, the urine bottles, like any facility, there is a sanitary sewer to use the facilities.
To dispose of it, okay?
To utilize the facilities.
A good question for you. You done?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, uh, good, regarding, how many van you have, so you, you, when you're talking about service, so how many van will be in that facility need service eventually? So because you're talking about, you're going to find a local dealership, we have a lot of local dealership, we want to make sure you use our dealer, so shop local, so we can get some service and text dollar.
We don't have the specific number off, offhand, but it, it's basically.
One hundred forty-two.
One with the number of drivers at.
I think it's in here somewhere.
One hundred forty-two, based on, okay, the information, one hundred forty-two van will be there, so you have a one hundred two van possible new service, and you just mentioned you will use our local dealer, local dealer is West Covina, and we have a local dealer right there, okay? So who, who made those van? Chevy, GM?
Very, usually the Sprinter vans, they could be, you know, Ford.
Toyota, okay.
Dodge and what have.
Dodge, this and that, so, yeah, maybe we can, you guys can consider using our local dealership, okay, if you're coming in.
Practice that we utilize.
Okay, so we can, our local dealership business can benefit for some of yours, okay, okay, uh, card, okay, or service. Okay, I'm done.
So, so, so do, do you, do you have control over, over which, um, provider the delivery service partners use, or is it just a suggestion?
So we basically would work with our on-the-road team to basically start those specific contracts. But Tim, do you have more details on those? Or, or leasing and maintenance and things of that nature? Yeah, it, it's typically our on-the-road team, I, I don't have the specific details, but we typically will work with our delivery service providers if identifies facility.
Okay, um.
Any other questions?
Okay, uh, so, so, um, uh, Green, Greenlaw, okay, and so we're talking about four hundred job, must be locally of West Covina, Covina resident, right?
So you want to talk about that, Tim?
Okay. What kind of job is it, beside the driver, beside the packaging? Do you have a, other, who is working over there beside the driver, deliver? I think they should have other employee, right?
Correct, correct. Those are, the other employees would be the associates that are working within the facility.
So meaning, okay, they have, uh, assembly, packaging, and then they have a helper, and they have a secretary, and they have a team leader, since you have a four hundred job you're going to bring in. So, so what kind of job, okay, beside the driver?
Uh, Councilman Wu, there are a variety of, of roles and, and job titles within the facility itself. A, as you correctly point out, some of those are supervisory or management.
So they can move up the ladder.
Some of those are, uh, human resources type, type roles, as well as, uh, you know, the associates that are involved in the process of, um, getting the packages from, you know, the, the line-haul trucks that bring, bring.
So do you have any problem?
To the delivery.
Do you have any problem to, okay, uh, hire our local resident, okay, West Covina, Covina resident?
That's ju, that, that is our practice at delivery stations and frankly, at Amazon facilities across the country, um, just to provide some, uh, data, relevant data.
So you would put a job fair, okay, and starting?
Yeah, ab, absolutely, and I can give a little bit more context than what we do when we do, when we are ready to hire for a facility. Just basically, we have a workforce staffing team that, and we, we welcome, and, uh, this is what we do when we open a site, we work with local workforce development agencies or economic development agencies or hiring, uh, organizations to make sure that that word is, goes out to, uh, the local community. Uh, we can partner with, uh, the local jurisdiction to make sure that those opportunities are advertised and that local residents are aware of those job openings as soon as they become available. And to, to provide a little bit more context, um, you know, with, with our facilities, um, you know, without any special requirements, uh, the, the majority of employees, fifty to sixty-five percent at least, uh, come from local communities for, for our facilities nationwide.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tabata?
Uh, just to, oh, if you could stay. Uh, so, um, of, of the jobs, how, how many of them are, are Amazon jobs? Like, that are for Amazon, of the, the jobs that this is gonna create? Is it, is it four hundred Amazon jobs, like, with, with Amazon?
Yeah, the, uh, the, of the more than four hundred jobs that this site is going to create, there's gonna be, as you're, you're pointing out, um, a, 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 a large proportion of that will be the associates that are operating within the facility, those will be Amazon associates.
When you say associate, you mean independent contractor, right?
No, associate means, uh, that, that's Amazon's lingo for, uh, our Amazon blue badge, Amazon employees.
So how many, how many of, of, yeah, that's, I want to know how many Amazon associates, um, are gonna be at this site?
I, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it would be a significant por, portion of that. Um, but to, to provide some more context on that, um, are the DSPs, um, their total, their total of the, you know, jobs created are typically, um, the majority of those jobs.
Okay, so the majority are gonna be non-Amazon jobs?
Are gonna be DSPs, correct.
Right, okay. Um, so for, for the Amazon jobs, um, would, would Amazon be willing to, to pay prevailing wage?
Sorry, repeat, could you please repeat?
Would Amazon be willing to pay the prevailing wage, the industry standard wage? Uh, because, um, according to, to what, um, was presented to us, uh, these are minimum wage, the fifteen dollars an hour, so that's, that's far below prevailing wage.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't agree with that characterization of, of the wages, you know, as we've shared in, in previous meetings and, and.
Fifteen dollars is, is the minimum wage?
The national starting wage for Amazon is fifteen dollars, and the average starting wage, uh, for Amazon nationally is eighteen dollars. That doesn't account for the benefits that are available from day one for those, uh, employees, and this includes our delivery service partners as well, um, which add an additional, at minimum, three dollars and fifty cents, uh, per hour, um, in additional benefits.
Okay, so, so, so the answer is no. Amazon isn't willing to, to pay the prevailing wage to add that to the?
There's a lot of organizations that don't pay prevailing.
No, I, I understand that.
When we bid for contracts here, I wish we had more people to bid for our city.
I, I, I under.
We're talking about Amazon.
I know.
I, I, I mean, I, I, I under, I understand, Mayor, um, you know, that, this, this is Amazon, and they are of a trillion-dollar company, uh, and, and so I thought I'd ask, I, I know San Diego County, um, required prevailing wage, and Amazon decided not to put a facility, so I wanted to see if Amazon would be willing to change that stance, but you answered no.
Any additional questions?
Um, no, I don't have a question, okay, and I want to move the motion to approve, okay, and, uh, in the, in the condition, in the condition of a two million dollar toward to the, okay, and the community enhancement fund, okay, and another two hundred thousand dollars, okay, toward the city in the duration of the contract, okay, of the lease, okay, additional, okay, and hundred thousand dollars, okay, and that will be go to the community enhancement fund, so beside the, okay, the two million dollars, we request another hundred thousand dollars, okay, community enhancer fund for the du, duration of the lease, okay? And then, okay, request, okay, the four hundred job, okay, let, okay, hopefully you can have a more full-time job, okay, and with benefit, okay, and, uh, we cannot force you, but we, at least we want, okay, and job in the West Covina and Covina area, this neighborhood, so we can, okay, help the people, okay, to get job, okay, and hopefully you can pay more, okay, to our resident. So basically, and, uh, this is my motion, okay, to approve, yes.
Madam Mayor, let's do this in three separate motions, if we can, and I apologize, Councilmember Wu, I might have to ask you to repeat that again, you went pretty fast, and we'll push this in.
And, and by the way, I have some question, we got some problem with, uh, planning commissioner request, I think the ward tell feet, the city only allow eight feet, okay, eight foot, so, okay, I want to, okay, changing to eight foot with a coordinate of the city, but still make sure the vegetation of the tree, okay, and regarding some restriction, I don't know what restriction they have, I want to make sure, I want to go to the, the city recommendation, okay, and, uh, okay, eliminate any of additional restriction to the developer, so, uh, that's my motion.
Uh, Council, uh, Member Wu, sorry, I have the conditions that the planning commission added.
I cannot see it, okay.
Oh. Screen?
You can put it on here.
Oh, um, let me see if I can make it bigger.
Oh, you have to put a small one.
Can I ask a clarifying question of staff for the twelve-foot wall? If, if, if I, I recall that, that the twelve-foot wall was a request by the Lark Allen property, right? Yeah, can you, can you speak to that?
Eric Iyer, I'm Council for Lark Allen Village. The, the twelve-foot wall was important to us because of the proximity of these activities to the, um, to the properties and the residences. That's why that was a, a direct discussion that we had.
Alan, okay, but my question, Hendrick, okay, hospital twenty-four hours is only six foot, so if you have six, six foot over here with twenty-four hours, just, right Jason, to your building, why you need over here, we did no activity, okay, it's parking lot, why you need a twelve foot? And you will look so ugly to the city?
Because the, the point of the twelve-foot wall was for some of the hours that are not in the prohibited timeframe, that there, to, to prevent noise spillage from coming in, in those early morning hours and in those later evening hours that are around, you know, the, the, um, condition would prevent any kind.
Alan, you, you want twelve foot, so the city, Joanne, can we, is that the issue, the safety issue? Because I never see a twelve-foot wall between the building.
I actually don't mind the twelve-feet wall because the big rigs are thirteen feet.
Which one?
The, the big rigs that do come in.
But that's already, that's inside, it's like a structure, okay? If this one is adjacent to property, they're not going to be there forever, they only twelve years, so.
Is this where the?
Twelve is right there, it's not over here, Jason, it's overkill. If the builder were into build for you, it's their issue, but I'm worried about the. If the builder were into build for you, it's their issue, but I'm worried about the city ordinance, that we don't want to give you the president the first time, then everybody want 12-foot.
I, I totally understand, and I think that what it came down to for us in our discussions with Greenlaw was we didn't.
But you have to understand.
We don't want to create a situation which would be overly restrictive for them in use of the eastern parking lot. And the way to do that was to build a, a taller wall to knock down any noise in, you know.
Do they already build a 12-foot inside their property to stop the noise? Because the parking lot over there is just doing that night time, no activity. And by the way, at the same time, okay, they have some kind of complaint, phone number for you. Just like my neighbor, sometimes I have loud music, I cannot stand it, but they still have a loud music, okay? So even, we want to live together, but it, it happened. But we want to accommodate as much as you can, but at the same time, you have to understand, we don't want to compromise the city ordinance, okay, otherwise, because Queensville Valley, we only allow them to put eight feet.
I, I totally get it, I want.
They have an apartment adjacent to the parking lot of Queensville Valley, we just approved the project, we only give them eight foot, okay, so why we give you a 12-foot?
Well, I, I think the, the reason was because of the nature of the activity in that parking lot. And the planning commission had initially looked at a lengthier.
They have activity, okay, that time, electric parking lot, I was there, okay, on the church time, so it's huge, like it's parking lot, okay, so do you have any activity that time, at the nighttime what they worry about? I think Amazon should answer this question.
Yeah, so during, during our peak type of operations, during that seasonality, we do have some operations up until around 10:00 PM or so. And I think the, the conversation went that is, to address the concerns of the neighboring property and any type of operations, this was, that was reached upon by Greenlaw.
Okay, we, we want to accommodate you, okay, we're not trying to, okay, we just worry about if we do this for you and then we set up the example and then later on, everybody want the same thing, and then because you're the first one.
And I, I totally understand that.
We don't, they already agree, okay, we don't care, okay? But the point is, I'm more worried about how we make city uniform, we want to protect their basic, at least some ordinance.
I, I totally understand that, and I think that where we're coming from is that this is a very unique situation in the nature of the use right next to an existing residential use. And so that's why, you know, we, we understood that, that there were, you know, the 10, the 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM was maybe too restrictive, and so we were trying to come up with a creative solution and part of that was a little bit taller of a wall and less hours of restriction.
Thank you so much, you, you really need it.
Yeah.
Joanne, is that, do we have any issue if we city allowed? I know they already, they both, both side already agree upon, but how about on the city side, do we have any issue?
Although the city has not approved a wall that high, the zoning code actually allows a wall, the, the maximum height of a wall that's allowed by the zoning code is whatever is, is approved by the hearing body through the precise plan process. So if, if the, if the council wants to approve a 12-foot wall, then that is allowed in the code.
But I really want to work with the neighbor, okay, to, so we can accommodate, okay, because we help you, you, it's a city project too, so you are one of us, but we just don't want to make a, something that if somebody will follow, say, hey, you have, there is all city thing, okay, you get it, why can we get it?
I, I totally understand, I, I understand the situation you're in. You know, I, I would think that if one was to come to you and ask for a 12-foot wall in the future, that, you know, they would, they, they should have a, a good reason. In this situation, to me, it seems as though there is a good reason for asking for this, you know, this larger wall to.
And don't forget, it's the next what, 700 feet, okay?
650 feet.
650 feet, that's, it's a block.
Yeah.
So we're talking about Great Wall, China.
Not that great.
Only micro, there's a, want to put a bar wire?
Look like a wall, China.
Yeah, I hate that thing, okay, so, so, so I hate wall, okay, I want to open space. So anyway, I really have an issue for you 12-foot, okay? I don't mind to go to the highest city eight feet and they put some kind of Italian Cypress, they grow so close and block everything, okay? I, I planted myself, I'm a two-story, my, my next door is one-story, so I put it to both side, I put Italian Cypress, after couple of years grow. So, so anyway, I, I didn't green, much look nicer for your resident with a green, with a tree.
It'll be both 12-foot wall and Cypress.
Rather than a wall of a jail, okay, that is like, look like a jail to me. Yeah, you want to say something? Okay, no.
I'm just wondering if we can say, agree to a wall up to 12 feet, but perhaps.
Okay.
The last feet or.
It's okay with you, so we try to work it out, but we will say, okay, no more than 12-foot, but we prefer eight feet, so in that way, we can kind of move on, on this, otherwise we stuck over here. Okay, we stuck, yeah, yeah, up to 12 feet, okay, okay. But I hope you understand the city point of view, okay? We just don't want to present something and then everybody will say, hey, and then, then we want the same thing, okay?
Tell him to call me, I'll, I'll talk to him.
Ah, yeah, okay, too late now, you already moved to other job, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're the ma, you're the lawyer, you're all the places, okay? And so anyway, okay, that is my motion.
Yeah, and I want to emphasize, I want to be firm on the eight-foot wall. As you've mentioned, I don't want to set a precedent that later causes those problems, and I also think that length of wall.
It's, it's, it's long. Yeah, I'm so worried about, because people all can see from the street and they see that huge, okay, Great Wall, China, okay? So it become maybe a monument, okay? So it's really the issue of the look, the aesthetic of the city, okay? And then, and then that is something we never have, they're high.
Any other additional questions?
Yeah, I, I just had one question on the school, if I could. Were you able to outreach and speak to Covina Valley Unified School District about the impact on the elementary school and the, and the middle school? And any comments from them?
Evening, yes. We made contact with the city managers, city engineers and staff at the city of Covina several months ago and incorporated all of their comments into our plan. Something like the traffic signal and restricting certain access to drive aisles. Those were requests from the city of Covina. We incorporated those into our plans, we've continued conversation with them over the last, you know, up until frankly, this week and moving forward with our project.
Okay, now, the, the Covina Valley Unified School District, because of the elementary school and then the junior high adjacent, was there any contact with, with them, with, with the school district? The Covina School District, I understand the city of Covina.
Sure, the school district we have not, but we'd be happy to speak with them.
Yeah, that would be important.
Okay, can you go to the detail?
Typically, that's something that the city would do. When you start the conversation with Covina, they would have the conversation with the, the school district.
Could you put the, can you put the, okay, one from planning, you put a planning, you want to put over there, we can still, we can see? Yeah, we've been waiting. Oh, can I see it, we can I see over here? Oh, can I see it? Oh, I got it, I got it, I got it. Recommended, okay, first development? So small, okay, can you, can you, can you read it, okay? Thank you, thank you so much.
The first condition here. Yeah. The recommended conditions from the planning commission are the following. Revised Development Agreement, Section 2C1 or I, to include the vehicle trip limitations for peak season identified in the ISMND. An ad language that includes a penalty if allowable trips are exceeded within an option for injunctive relief. Prohibit off-site parking, prohibit use of drones.
Can you move on the first one? The first one is basically, they want the traffic count, right?
I'm sorry?
The first one, okay, okay, this one you want to, the traffic count, because you have penalty if not allowable trip, okay, exist with a option for.
So if, if the.
Injunction relief.
Yeah.
Basically, this is, okay, the only way we will know is we need somebody to count the traffic.
Correct.
Did, did the peak season include prime, prime day?
I believe peak season was, nope, it did not.
Okay, because, because, because prime, prime days is also Amazon, right? Would, would be a, a huge increase in deliveries around.
Okay, I, I still cannot see it disappear again, on the monitor.
And then if you could also tell us, share with the council the, the date of, of prime, prime, prime day?
So, so there is, there are increases, it does increase during that specific time during prime day as well as during the seasonality shifts, but as indicated by your traffic engineer, the West Covina and Covina traffic guidelines, IT recommendations is that you analyze your normal operations for purposes of basically imposing type of impacts and addressing concerns related to, to see.
Right, but, right, so I was just, because again, for, for residents, prime, prime day occurs when?
It's, I don't have the date off, but it's in some type of.
They talk about Thanksgiving.
Do we know? It's a moving time.
Yeah, it's a moving.
Okay. Okay, uh, okay, my, my question over here, since I'm starting the question, I haven't finished my question yet. Okay, any hours city, do we have any traffic count to any drive-through?
That it's required on an annual basis?
Yes, do we have any? No, right? So, so why we, if they only have a 914, even the peak, if we said peak about, okay, 20, 30% increase during the peak season, so we're talking about 1,200 for 22, for 21.22 acre lot with a seven, okay, entry, okay, and for the, even they go up to 1,300 during the peak season, it's still similar to one day of a chivalry. So, so why we didn't ask the traffic count on the chivalry, because we don't want restricted business?
Yeah, it was not asked.
So this is, any, any other city request this kind of? Because then we talking about, we need somebody to count, okay, and, okay, then we need the cost. A second thing, okay, this thing, after they, they, we count, oh, they more than like 50, so what we can do, the, the future city council, they can shut it down, okay, is that what this is about?
I believe that the recommendation from the planning commission was to injective relief.
But do we already have a traffic report to talk about the, the traffic impact?
Your city manager would like to.
If I could try to help clarify, the, the development agreement defines the operational conditions that are being imposed upon the project. The planning commission had two four-hour public hearings, we were, we were all here for a couple of long nights, but none of these conditions are reflected in the documents that are in front of you tonight, nor have they been agreed to by the developer. So the original development agreement is what's in your packet and is what your staff is recommending.
That's what I say, okay?
I, I would like clarification on one item.
I don't want to go through this.
Through the chair, if I may. I heard tonight some different numbers in terms of the community benefit payments, so I'd like to summarize those, you're acting upon these tonight. They're agreeing tonight, instead of the documents that are in front of you, to pay $2.3 million at certificate of occupancy for a community benefit payment, then $300,000 per year for 11 additional years after Amazon starts operation. And the developer agrees to those.
No, 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 sorry, I'm sorry, city manager, no, it's not what.
Want to make sure I get it right.
No, I, I want to, okay, make sure, okay, my request, my motion clear. $2 million, $2 million, please, you want to wait, $2 million, okay, upfront, if this project approve and they, okay, and starting doing the business, $2 million upfront to the Community Enhancement Fund.
I understand.
Okay, that will be go to, not general fund, that money will go to the community for the rent assist, okay, or some, okay, seniors, okay, or children, or after-school program, okay? This is a community, including the military, this and that.
I understand.
$200,000 in the duration of the lease, if the lease is 12 years, we want this $200,000 for the 12 years. This $200,000 can go to general fund to fix our pothole, this and that for the car in our city. Additional $100,000, that's why I just add this one, request a Community Enhancement Fund.
I understand.
Separate, so you have a $200,000 general fund into another $100,000 at the duration of the lease into our community, okay, it's not general fund, I don't want, I want to make sure, because I got scammed last time from the previous city manager, they put everything in general fund, then we get nothing.
I understand completely.
Okay, and I think.
I have a small distinction, but it makes a difference.
Okay.
Tonight, instead of $2 million at certificate of occupancy, the developer is willing to pay $2.3 million at CVO. Nudge your head this way, it's better.
So, so the, so, so the $2 million plus the 200 and the 100,000. Got it, because they are, they are different location, okay, allocated, okay? I don't want everything go to general fund. Got it, so this.
It would help me a lot if we could get the developer to agree, it's, it's a lot of money, I'd like for them to, on the record.
This is our request, take or leave it.
I understand.
You know, it's a $2 million for the community benefit at CVO. $100,000 at CVO for the first year of the lease for the community benefit, so 2.1. And then $200,000 for repairing, maintenance of pothole streets and all of that.
Go to general fund.
General, general fund, so the total is 2.3, but it's broke up really into two buckets, 2.1 and 200,000. And they would, the first year would all come at CVO, which approximately, you know, August, September next year.
That would be, that would be $300,000, $200,000 of general fund, $100,000 for the community, okay, enhancement.
That's the first year, and then after that, it would be the three, you got me?
Yeah, yeah, he said it better than I did, I agree. So that's, that's clear, and the 400 job would be local, okay? And the recommendation for your service to our local dealership, so that would be on the contract, but it's recommended because we cannot force you to do, do the service. But the 400 job, there would be requirement for our local resident, okay, to have a priority to get this job. So you have to go to job fair and the city have to kind of come, go with you to make sure that is going into our resident, so.
We're happy to work with the city on, on the local hiring.
So, so, so can we work with their hiring procedures to make sure, okay, all this is our local resident? Because, okay, that is what I think resident want, is they want job, so we want to create a job opportunity and hopefully, they're willing to keep, pay people more and more, okay? And, but again, but at least we have start someplace, okay?
I understand. If we will incorporate that as, as a strategic initiative to be worked out between us.
Yeah, got it, okay, we will base on the city recommendation with all this, we just add on with all this compensation, and this is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I want, I'll second it, but with an eight-foot.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, let's, let's do this in, let's do this in three motions, let's. Your first motion would be to adopt the four resolutions as recommended by staff, 2021, 103, 104, 105 and 106. Is there, I need a motion to approve those four resolutions?
Okay, and then, okay, Mayor Potem Casianos say, he insists he want eight foot, so I will follow his.
That won't, that's not going in these resolutions, we'll get to that, that'll be the last.
Got it, got it, got it.
So, is there a motion to approve the four resolutions as recommended by staff?
Uh, so move.
Second.
Councilmember Tabat Tabai?
Yeah, before I vote, I just want to, to make clear, there are no 400 Amazon jobs and, and really, what we're approving is line use for delivery service partners, not, not for Amazon. So my vote is no.
Continue, roll call.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Casianos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viero?
Job is a job, aye. Passes 4-1.
Okay, Madam Mayor. Second.
Can you go to the second resolution?
Second resolution, please.
Okay, order please, okay?
Second motion is to introduce ordinance number 2489.
Can everybody please be quiet, I can't hear you, thank you, please?
Second motion is to introduce ordinance number 2489.
So move.
Second.
Actually, Madam Mayor, before I take the vote, I'm obligated to read the ordinance title onto the record with your consent. Ordinance number 2489, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving zone change number 20-04 to change zoning designation to 1211 East Bideillo Street to manufacturing M1. With that being said, Councilmember Tabata Bai?
A strong no.
Councilman?
Continue, please, continue. Order, order, continue, please.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viara?
Aye, motion passes 4-1.
Okay, the last motion is to introduce ordinance number 2490 with Councilmember Wu's...
Mayor Protem requests eight foot.
Okay.
Wall, right?
So, so your motion is, is for the, is for the 2.3 million in the first year, the 200, which goes to the, 2.1 of that goes to the Community Enhancement Fund, 200,000 goes to the general fund, and then for the 12 years, 200,000 to the general fund, and then additional 100,000 to the community.
And, and, okay...
And then we'll add a good faith?
No, not, no, okay, yes, okay, add, okay, if they renew, subject to the renew of Amazon, they need to continue to negotiate pay us.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be included in...
So basically, duration of the lease, that's my, my motion.
And then we're going to add the height of the wall?
Okay, based on, you insist eight foot?
I insist on eight foot.
Okay, so it's a stay with the city coordinates, eight foot?
I would like to attend.
Condition with respect to, um, hiring local, which we will work out.
Yes, okay, yeah, and with supervision of our city.
Okay, that is the motion with those, and just introduce in first reading.
So move.
Second.
And before I take the vote, I once again have to read the ordinance title into the record. So ordinance number 2490, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving development agreement to, uh, development agreement number 21-01, development agreement between the City of West Covina and AG West Covina Owners LLC for the development of the Amazon Delivery Station DAX9 project. Councilmember Tabata Bai?
No.
Continue. Order. Order. Continue. All right, we already got that, thank you, order.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Sergeant of Arms?
Councilwoman Diaz?
All right, continue, please, go ahead.
About that, Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viara?
Aye, motion passes 4-1. Onto item number seven, consideration of zone change number 20-04 and adoption of ordinance number 2473, code amendment related to residential agriculture and single-family residential R1 standards. City Clerk, verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Mayor, proper legal notice has been given.
Okay, at this time, I'll open to public hearing on the project, there will be first...
Let it go back.
Okay, go ahead, we'll clear, we're going to clear the chambers first. Go ahead, thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night, drive safe. Okay, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing on the project, and we'll first, the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear for those in favor of the project, then those who oppose, so Mr. Carmody, who will present the staff report?
Planning Manager Joanne Burns will present this report, ma'am.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the planning, of City Council, sorry. I'll go ahead and... I'll go ahead and start off with some background information and the history of this ordinance. This ordinance was actually last heard by the City Council on August 4th of last year. At that time, the City Council forwarded the ordinance back to the Planning Commission because there were some items that were in the ordinance that the City Council did not agree with and did not approve. The Planning Commission then held a public hearing on August 24th, 2021, and, and also on September 28, 2021, and recommended that the City, that the planning, that the City Council approve the draft ordinance. I'll go ahead and go over the content of the draft ordinance. So, in, in the, in the draft ordinance... In this section, garages will no longer be counted towards a maximum unit size to, so that it is consistent with industry standards. So, the red, um, underlined portion is what's been added, and the red crossed out section is what's being deleted. The recreation room was added to the examples of non-habitable accessory buildings or structures. Currently, the city does not allow standalone recreation room to be an accessory, non-habitable structure, so to clarify that this would be allowed, recreation room was added. This section pertains to additions to homes that are, that are exceeding 300 square feet. If a property owner wanted to add 300 square feet to their house, they need to have a two-car garage and driveway space to fit the two vehicles. This is in response to the ADU ordinance where garages are allowed to be converted into, into accessory dwelling units, and in that sense, when garages are converted into accessory dwelling units, homes no longer have these garages to accommodate vehicle parking. In this section, driveway width is, um, the, the, the draft ordinance identifies a maximum width for driveways if there is no garage. Currently, the maximum driveway width is tied to the width of the garage, it's the width of the garage plus 12 feet, however, when accessory, when garages are converted into accessory dwelling units, it, the current code doesn't, does not have standards for, for the driveway width for the, for those situations, so this section limits the maximum driveway width to 20 feet if there is no garage. So this section reduces the side and rear yard setback for non-habitable structures to four feet. There was initially a request that, that non-habitable accessory structures should be reduced to four feet to be more consistent with, with the city's requirement pertaining to ADUs. This section allows the increased height of detached garages and storage sheds within required rear yard to be 20 feet with a director's review and determination that the design is compatible with other structures on the property and is at least 15 feet away from any permitted structure and/or swing poles on the neighboring property. This section also reform, reformatted the existing section and cross-referenced, uh, the requirements for yards and setbacks section that's currently in the code. The other, the other changes that are also proposed within the draft ordinance is, is sections that are basically cross-referencing, that's currently cross-referencing the sections that are changing so that there, there are any, to protect the city from any potential mistakes in, in determination when, when planners are, are going over the code, so that, so that, to ensure that each section in the code is properly enforced. Sections were also deleted that identified insignificant dates. All existing structures that are permitted in the city are considered legally non-conforming, and it doesn't, whether or not it complies to the current code, no matter when it's, when it's constructed, so removing these dates would, would basically reinstate that if something is legal, it's, it's, if it was legally built with permits, it's going to be allowed, and the city's not going to require them to remove it. With this, staff is recommending that City Council conduct a public hearing and then introduce ordinance number 2473, approving code amendment 20-04. If the City Council has any questions, I'm available to answer.
Same as before, can we hold questions until after public comments? So, go ahead with the, is there, how many public comments do we have?
Madam Mayor, there are no speakers in favor or opposed.
Speakers, okay, questions with council, any?
Madam Mayor, I don't have questions, but I'll make a comment, I like these revisions, I think it looks good, I think it's overdue and needed, so thank you, staff, for working on this, I appreciate it, that's all.
Is there anything else?
There's no further comment, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second, and I agree with Mayor Protem Castellanos' comments.
Before I take the vote, I'm obligated to read the ordinance title into the record. So ordinance number 2473, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving code amendment number 20-04, code amendment related to residential agriculture RA and single-family residential R1 standard. With that being said, Councilmember Tabata Bai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viara?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Now, on to the mayor council member reports, seeing none, City Council request, oh...
Yeah, I have a request, okay, and, okay, I want to make sure the, the safety, okay, integrity of the City Council, City staff, appointed commissioner, that, okay, their home is a sanctuary, that without any harassment or any of a potential issue, okay, and no matter how we make a decision, we always make some people happy, some people mad, but this is our job, our job should be protected, okay, under the Constitution, then our safety should be protected, so I want to make sure city to look into any potential disharassment will be, okay, either ordinance fine or criminal prosecution, but this is my request. So in that way, our current City Council employee and any appointed commissioner, okay, and they can make their decision without any influence, with, based on their swaying about what they decide to, what the best for the city, okay, so city, city attorney, you want to add on this?
If that's the consensus, we will get together with PD and, um, look into it and see what...
I think this is very important because, okay, and to protect, okay, as we doing over here, as like a volunteer, don't even get paid, okay, and we need to make sure the current, the future City Council people willing to do this job, this is very, you make a decision, look at people angry, people this, but it's a decision, okay, it's a point and come, but you should base on your judgment, okay, and why is the best, okay, and all hard and honest to do your decision, so, but that should be protected, okay, to all council, city employee, appointed commissioner, okay, and so I request the city to look into it.
I agree, none of us should be intimidated by anybody with regard to how we vote on things, so I'll second that.
Yeah, and, and I would, I would just like to add that, that should also apply to all staff and council and commissioners to each other.
Definitely agree.
Yeah, of course.
Like sports, there's always...
And especially like, for example, campaign, okay, and like, okay, and the people starting encroach their home, and let's prohibit, okay, everybody run their campaign, everybody make their decision, they shouldn't put some kind of divulgatory sign in front of their home, I think, okay, Councilman Tabata Bai, you told me your house, if somebody put the sign, no, no Amazon in West Covina, same thing, my house has a, without permission, they put a big two sign today, even knock on my door, I think this is very uncalled for, okay, for six years sit on this seat, okay, we have a union member, we have a dispute, they always very respectful, they, they, they don't go to your home, but they will request you to meet with them, okay, or listen to their, okay, sign, but I think, I'm not going to their home to harass them, so I do not want anybody come to my home with my privacy, so, so I think this is important for all the council, member of the future candidate, they should all, okay, follow this, respect each other, okay, and then everybody do their job with their conscience, okay, thank you.
Protem Castellanos had a...
And, so I think we have consensus on that, right? Moving on, I do have a request, kind of a follow-up that I asked the staff to get Union Station to give us an update about what they're doing for us, how they spend their time and money, and more broadly, I'd like to expand that to request staff to ask how they're spending Measure H dollars, and assess the effectiveness of that.
Any other questions, concerns?
I don't know if it needed, but I, yeah, I think a presentation, right, from the county on Measure H and Union Station, I think those would be beneficial, and I wanted to just support.
Yeah, I want to say something. I want to thank Paulina and all the staff, okay, and Eric, okay, the designers, okay, put the most magnificent state of the city 2021, you are so lucky, Mayor, okay, so I don't have anything last year, I can shut down, I have to stay home and cry. But that's a magnificent event, Paulina did a good job, okay, and the spool plaque is magnificent, I want to thank all the maintenance staff, they put that place so clean, so nice, even the bathroom is nice, I have no complaint in the bathroom, okay, and so, so, and the staff, okay, and you ordered the food, okay, and El Cholo, El Cholo, okay, everybody says make, I didn't eat, I have no time, I would, I was, I was like talking all the time, but everybody told me the food is so great, my wife said food is, is good, so, so, so thank you so much, and it's an extremely magnificent event, and I think we thank all our employee, okay, they deserve it, they last year pandemic and this year, okay, and they, they work hard, okay, and then that is for them, and I want to thank all the staff for their hard work, and Paulina, again, thank you so much, put this together, you surprised me, I don't think you can do it, but you did it, okay, so, so, thank you so much, okay, and by the way, and the next, the next day, Saturday, then we have Filipino-American festival, that's unbelievable, 2,000 people using the arena again, the indoor soccer field with a black IP, black IP, okay, show up, and it brought down the house, okay, it's so many people, again, I want to thank the staff, put it together, I think city make a lot of money in the day, it's 2,000 people, five dollar apiece.
But more importantly, I want to know if Councilman Tabata Bai ate the balut?
Huh? I did not, because it was not, it was not made available to me at the time, but West Covina Plaza, I am sure at the event this Saturday, will have some, and I'm going to eat it, and I will Instagram live that, and it'll be enjoyable, and just to add on, Paulina, it was a magnificent event, and I also want to just shout out to Live West Covina, it is a new Facebook group, if you want to know every event going on in West Covina, join that group, Live West Covina, it's fantastic, and I check it every day just to make sure I don't miss anything.
Thank you, and they post everything that happens within the city, residents, not necessarily all West, like, city sponsored, but everything else...
I want to add on this, okay, I want to really thank, okay, the person put this together because it's no politics, it's just event and resource, I think this is what we want, okay, we want the event and the resource, and we are all, rest of West Covina, we united together, okay, and we all neighbors, no matter we have left or right, okay, ideology, but we still live together with our kid, so, so I want to thank this very positive, okay, and the group to continue give us the event, so, because we don't know, and hopefully city can follow through, you guys have to kind of pick up the, this is your job, okay, so hopefully... the, this is your job, okay, so hopefully you sign up, like, Live West Covina and get all those information into, uh, your site, but I understand, okay, we have a new staff coming in, okay, in charge of a community service as a director, so in that way, we need her to help with branding, uh, with communication, and put all the event upfront to our resident, and make sure our resident, uh, informative to all this information they needed, okay, the people, a lot of people, they want to know what's going on, and they want to go to event, and we want people to show up, okay, and we want people to come out, let's enjoying the outdoor, let's enjoying the event, so they don't have to cocoon this at home, but thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no, to go again, um, they also thank the sponsors for the state of the city, because they put in a lot to support the employees and employee, uh, the whole event, so a big shout out to all the sponsors who, who donated, um, and then, but as for the sportsplex, people are reaching out, so I'll be forwarding you that they want to continue to do have, to have more special events, I know one recently reached out to have like a Christmas event there for the community, so I'll send that over, um, so the sportsplex is, is now happening, so, uh, other than that, anything else?
Oh, have a good night.
No, then, that concludes our meeting, uh, adjournment, have a good night.
Go Dodgers.
Oh, yeah, go Dodgers.